...that they don't fall into disarray by the failure of this body to appoint sufficient people and members to conduct the business of the people. I'm Barry Allen for Vanguard. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Menuchaian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. Next, please.
At 3F is appointment of Lisa Kunst to the Commission on the Status of Women.
Move 3F.
Second?
I have one card. Barry Allen, two minutes.
Mr. Mayor, council staff, and the public, I'm Barry Allen. And I think, Mr. Yusefian, I would like to thank you on behalf of the men and women and the public of this community for exercising your judgment in appointing sufficient people to the Commission on the Status of Women. And I know that with your championship, the other boards and commissions will likewise have quality people on them to do the business of the public. Thank you. I'm Barry Allen for Vanguard.
For the record, it took two people to do the interviews and do the selection, Mr. Allen. No one person does it. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Menuchaian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Weaver. While we're on appointments, I would like to put on the agenda reappearance of Ivan Insua for Design Review Board Two.
Any others?
Yes, I'd like to put the reappearance of Ruby Sully on to the Transportation and Parking Commission.
Thank you. So ordered. Any others? Thank you. What's next, please?
Next is council or staff comments.
Anybody?
I have.
Mr. Yusefian?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As you know, in our weekly report, we did have a copy of our council meeting's follow-up items, which I have in my hand. One of the items that kind of stuck out to me was, this was an item that we talked about, I think this was before Mr. Najarian was on the office. As of 6/8/04, there was some talk and interest on behalf of the council to deal with the red light cameras. And so this has been in there since 6/8/04, so it's almost two years. And I like to see them before, and this was requested by Mr. Gomez. Mr. Gomez is no longer on this dais.
What's a red light camera?
I like...
I asked about it in 97.
Right, and you asked for it a lot longer than that, so I like to see it sometimes...
And Mr. Mayor, in defense, you have had updates on that topic at council meetings since, and that's just the original date that we're carrying, so...
The courts have had it.
Recognizing that.
It's done.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it has cleared the courts, and it's pretty much full steam ahead. So, a couple of things have occurred. We've had some firms that have gotten into business and then gotten out of the business. So, we're really settling on a couple of firms, and we're putting together an RFP right now for them to come out and do some analysis of our intersections and select those that they would recommend. We try this on a pilot basis at least to see how it works, and we're cooperating with the police department to accomplish that. We're expecting to have an RFP out probably mid to end of August.
Okay.
I do just want to note, though, you've had reports here since so far. We've just been carrying the original date on the follow-up list.
The other thing, Mr. Mayor, is item number 13. I just want to know if this is done already or if we're waiting for it. It says, "Local franchise fees for trash pickup." Part of larger report, it was dated on 3/6. Did we do that? We move in direction?
That's an action we need to bring because it requires formal notification of the various trash haulers, so that's yet to be done.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Yusefian, we just received the legal opinion from the city attorney's office, and now we're going to prepare a report and bring that back to you with some options that we might have to proceed with that.
The reason I ask is because it said in here, it says, "Targeted date for report is 3/6," and 3/6 has come and gone. And that's why I brought that up. Also, number 23, it says, "Chest park trees to be replaced." This is one chest park tree that was broken. It says, "Yusefian," I just want to let you know, you can remove it off the list because as I walked back there on Saturday, there's a new, there's a, I think it's either a maple or it's a sycamore that's standing there, so you don't have to worry about it. Somebody has redone that. The other thing that we talked about, which I do not see, there's other ones in here, but the one that I do not see, there was a request to bring in the policy, what the policy is on a use of police reserves. This is not listed on this. That's it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I have a couple of comments before then, to give you lead time. Mr. Allen, you want to speak on 7/8, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7? I need a card for each one, please. If you have time to do that while I move on with the other items. Tomorrow, I'll have Dave's Corner at Porto's Bakery at 9:00 a.m., so we receive some calls of people that want to come down. I don't know what they want to do with me, but I'll be down there at 9 o'clock at Porto's Bakery. Feel free to come down. And as usual, I'm at Patrick's Cafe at 7:30 in the morning every day. Beyond that, Miss Universe Pageant, the 88 ladies will be at the Oakmont Country Club this Friday at 6 o'clock. This is the premiere event leading up to the pageant that'll be at the Shrine Auditorium. I think NBC might be covering it. It's going to be their showcase events, the girls will all be in their evening gaunt--yes, they'll all be in their evening gowns, and they're all bringing gifts from their home countries that'll be put up for silent auction. And you get a full meal, I think it's steak and salmon, dinner. The price for everything is $50. What you want to bid for the silent auctions is up to you. You can get tickets through the Glendale Symphony Orchestra. This is a fundraiser for them with all the money raised, that money going to them. You can call them at 500-8720. It's almost sold out. Event starts at 6:00 p.m. on Friday evening, the 14th. And pencil in the date, the Dreamy Roses event will be on September 10th at KABC-TV again, 7th one. Let's see, was there any other? That's it. My side, as far as I can recall. Yes, Mr. Yusefian again?
I forgot a couple of things. Number 20 is, should be removed off the list since it's been completed already. This is provide list of how panels are selected, chairs, and which positions are being filled. This was completed, so that should be removed. Also, I realized that Montrose Collection number 24 and Honolulu Banquet Hall issue, they're both the same item, so should be just one. Don't need to...
Thank you. No other comments? What is next, please?
Next is consent items, including minutes. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the consent calendar?
So moved.
No one pulled?
Unfold.
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmembers Menuchaian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. Okay, now this is where I was going to pull.
Nine.
Nine up here. Are the parties here? Both sides? I mean, the applicant? Okay. Well, they knew council started at 6:00. Okay, let's go through oral communications. And...
Can we do some ordinances? Do we want to order?
I have cards on every single one. So let's do oral communications, see if the party show up. Okay. Oral communications. First speaker, Barry Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, staff, and council, and the public. I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard. And for the TV audience around the world, I want you to know that you should be very excited for Vanguard having its roots in Glendale, being the first chapter of Glendale. We have added one in Oxnard, looking for accountability there as well. And a phone call today, we have an interested party who is looking at the accountability in one of our beach communities in Orange County. So I know that you'll be excited to know that Glendale started this whole thing off with people looking at their governments, looking at the accountability within the government, and making their elected officials accountable. Now, speaking of elected officials, we are very pleased to see five elected officials sitting in the dais and one sitting in the well, Artie Castacian. We don't see Mr. Barucki, who is as well an elected official. And I think that this community does require, should have, a report from our treasurer, at least on a monthly basis, maybe on a quarterly basis, if we can do that, to find out exactly what's going on with an elected official. After all, you know, he does run for office, and we do want to see him more than just when he, his name is on the ballot. So I think it's important that it goes to the integrity of the process that we have here in the city. Now, you know that we've been talking about the fire department, and I'm happy to see a number of the firemen here tonight. Certainly, it's contract time, and we'll be talking about that at the appropriate time. But last night at the Downtown Specific Plan Advisory Committee, out of the clear blue, the committee was asked to rank the priority of two new fire stations. And, you know, we asked questions, that where did this come from? Well, we think it's an important issue. It may well be an important issue, but there have been no facts, no criteria, and nothing given, and the fact that these two fire stations are not in the downtown specific area boundary. It's not proximate to it. One is in Montrose, and one is at Brandon Stocker. Certainly not within the area, but all of a sudden it appeared there. And, you know, is, who's looking to get a consensus from an ad hoc group of city residents and people who are involved in development in the city to get a rubber stamp approval for two new fire stations? Now, acknowledge that the planning people have not read the document that supports the GIS, GFD document that supports the fire department and a need, but it doesn't show that it's a $25 million need. Now, there were some other interesting comments that were brought out, and those comments were, does this, are we talking about new fire techniques and strategies to do battle with high-rise buildings, or to be able to use smaller vehicles to get the apparatus to a fire scene because of the lack of mobility and the fact that this committee wasn't given all of the data that we asked for to be able to provide intelligent feedback to the city? Didn't happen. So here we are with the fire, two fire stations on the, on our agenda, and it's questionable as to why they were there, and nobody could support that particular need. And I think it's certainly something that we need to look at, but not on the downtown specific plan. Now, of course, we have the long-range planning, and that had, one of the major topics was fire departments. Do we need fire departments? Should we, should we expand them? And so far, I haven't seen the report on that, but I understand from preliminary data, it didn't show up very high on the report. So anyways, Vanguard is working diligently to help the fire department find new models that will give greater benefit to the city, and I think I reported on one of them last week, as I mentioned that Mr. Najarian certainly could support the program that we gave because he's a law and order, public safety person. And I mentioned before, not that the appointment of commissioners is not a two-man job, or two men, but that it seems as if Councilmember Yusefian is the one who's championing that to get it right up to the minute. Thank you. I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard.
Next speaker, Chad Edgington, followed by Dr. Larry Ringel.
Good evening, members of city council. My name is Chad Edgington, a senior system dispatcher for the city of Glendale. The purpose for my addressing council tonight is to ask for your help in resolving an unresolved issue about inequities. Prior to giving you a brief analytical breakdown, a timeline of events, I am grateful to have worked for the last 15 years with the city of Glendale, and the opportunity I've provided myself and my family great opportunities. Let me now give you a little history first. In mid-2004, GWP's employees were not happy with our current GCA and started a movement to get a union to represent them instead of the GCA. These employees consisted of GWP power plant and field construction in operation. These groups comprised the vast majority of GWP employees. The dispatch then and now remain loyal to GWP management and the GCA. We did not believe in the union representation. In November of 2004, GWP management, personnel, and GCA and select power plant and field construction and operation personnel conducted an inequity study. In a nutshell, these GWP employees were not happy with the dispatchers that did not support their cause and were over 11% out of market value, and they were far lower. This was brought to my attention by Mr. Coronado, former GCA president. After receiving a copy of this report, a group of senior dispatchers put together an equity study for the GCA negotiation committee. Personnel and GWP management also got a copy. After July of 2005 pay period, dispatchers received their paycheck and noticed a raise of 7%. We were very grateful for that raise. We questioned GCA president, Mr. Wilkie, why dispatch didn't receive market value like the others' positions in GWP. He claimed he knew nothing about the dispatchers' inequity study. The two dispatchers set up a meeting on the night, 9/29/2005, with HR, GWP management, and GCA president to discuss dispatcher inequity study. In this meeting, GWP management said that we cannot compare our job duties equal to other dispatchers because we did marketing of energy, not just controlling the electrical system. We arranged a meeting on 12/13/2005 with HR, GWP management, and GCA president. We renegotiated our job duties, and that was approved back in, earlier this year, in 3/7/2006 by this council. On 2/21, we gave an updated copy of our inequity study to GWP management and the GCA president to be included and discussed in the next rounds of inequities advised by our GCA president. On 5/1/2006, GCA president sent an email stating all inequity raises. This time, dispatchers were not on the list at all. Our GCA representative was informed that the dispatch was, had no voting power because there was only nine of us, and our GCA president had more important things to do and to deal with. Our GWP management was asked to work with dispatchers. It was relayed to dispatchers time and time again. They had no interest in talking to us. I was then directed to go to the city manager on 6/1/2006. I gave a copy of the inequity studies at this time to Mr. Starburg, and he conducted a meeting on 6/5/2006 with HR, GWP management. He responded in a form letter, the only thus far given a definite response. I thank him for that response. It's the first time we got in response. This nicely drafted, brief letter said, quote, "We believe that we have acted in good faith." Also, this letter states the 7% inequity and the 3.5 cost of living, which dispatchers equaled 10%, 10.5% salary increase. Every dispatcher is grateful for the raises they got. I am asking for your help from city council members to make things right. This is my last venue within the city to try to get this resolved. I'm asking for one of you to help and champion this cause. I've left a copy of a brief of what I've written here, so I wouldn't get off on a tangent and try to keep things positive. I've also given the city clerk a larger copy of all the findings, and I just would appreciate if anyone would, from council, would care to contact me and that we can maybe follow the admonition of the prayer that was given at the beginning of this council. I thank you for your time. I hope to hear from one of, one or all of you.
Yusefian? I, I, I just want to, forgive me for asking this. I still don't know what the inequity is. You got 10.5% increase in the first year. So I don't know what you guys really do, to be honest with you, number one. I don't know how much you guys get paid, so maybe you can enlighten me by letting me know, what is it that you guys get? I mean, what's your...
Wait, I don't want to get into this.
I didn't want to get into it in council.
No, no. No, I don't want to get into this.
You have an agenda issue here, but you're welcome to speak to the gentleman directly. I'll also provide you all the background, all that information. Was subject to meeting in further this year, actually in the year of the contract with GCA. I think he's recounted the chronology accurately. We have a disagreement as to whether or not we continue to have inequities, and I'll bring the council up to speed on all of that, but not now.
Talk to us, bring us a report.
Right, I don't believe it's appropriate place to discuss it at this time. I just wanted to get my message out there.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, council members. I have to go to work now to keep the microphone.
Okay, thank you.
That's what I do, I keep all the energy in the...
Thank you. Next speaker, Dr. Larry Ringel, followed by Ross Ferris.
Oh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Yusefian?
I hate to say this, I find it interesting, it's appropriate for them to come in here and say that they have an issue with inequities. Nevertheless, trying to understand what that is in the public arena is inappropriate. So can somebody explain that to me? If it's appropriate to bring, if it was inappropriate to even discuss it here, then it should have been inappropriate for that information to come to us in a public forum to begin with.
Number one, Mr. Howard, why don't you explain?
Well, I think you're making an assumption that it was appropriate to come in here in the first place.
Thank you. For your...
Sir, right ahead.
Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening. My name is Larry Ringel, and I'm a member of the Committee for Clean and Beautiful Glendale. I'm here to, we're a group of volunteers that work on creating the city to be a safe, good quality of life place to live in, work, and play. We have an upcoming fundraising event that I'd like to invite you, your family, your friends, and all members of Glendale too. It's called Summer Night on the Plaza. It'll be on July the 21st from 6:00 to 8:00. It'll be in the Perkins Plaza at 141 North Glendale. The featured foods there will be from some of the best restaurants in Glendale. There will also be entertainment. There's a photo contest called My Hometown, all by amateurs, and the two final winners, which will be judged by the people that will be there that night, will receive $100 cash as the two winners. This, the proceeds for this are going to go to the committee which works on things, you're aware of the Great American Graffiti Paint Out, which has now been expanded, and next year will be a full weekend called the Great American Cleanup. The Gem Award for the homes that represent beauty in Glendale, the Neighborhood Gem Awards as well, as you know, the graffiti paint out and so forth. This is really what this is going to go for. We need your continued support in order to continue to work with these programs. We all are volunteers, but it does need financial support as well. The tickets for adults are $10, and for children under 12 are $5. They can be obtained from Julie Schimler at the Neighborhood Services Office at 818-550-4508, or you can stop by the Neighborhood Services Office or pick them up there. One last point is that the volunteers on this committee work hand in hand with the Neighborhood Services staff, and that's how we get things done, and that's how we make things happen. So thank you very much for listening to me, and I look forward to seeing you on the 21st of July.
Thank you. Ross Ferris, followed by the team of Paula Devine and Maria Salazar. Whoops. What? What happened?
Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening. My name is Ross Ferris. I'm the chairman of the Cruise Night Organizing Committee, and I'd like to invite everyone to come out to the city's Cruise Night event this Saturday night, July 15th, begins at 5:30 and ends at 10:30. It's a combination of classic cars, great entertainment. The businesses are all open. You can have dinner, take your family to a movie, go shopping, and just have a great night in our downtown area. The entertainment consists of the Kingsman, the Freddie Boom Boom Cannon, and the Marvelettes. Sean Anaw from the TV show will be there. They will play one set, and they will also be guest judges for the classic cars. It's a people's choice type judging. Presently, we have 301 cars pre-registered. We hope to have close to 400 by the time we start the event. And parking after 12 noon is free in the Orange Street Garage. The other city garages, there'll be a $2 flat rate after 3 o'clock in the afternoon. So I encourage everyone to come out. It's a wonderful event. We have over 30,000 people have had in the past attend, and everybody has a good time.
Ross? What cross streets will be closed at what hours?
Brand Boulevard at Doran will be the northernmost point. Brand Boulevard at Broadway will be the southernmost point, and then the adjacent streets, Milford, Lexington, California will be closed at Maryland and Orange.
At what time?
They will be closed at 11 o'clock. Brand Boulevard will be closed from Broadway to California, and then the rest of the venue will be closed at noon.
Okay. So if you're going across town, don't try it after those hours. Go around. I've been caught.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ross. Okay, Paula Devine and Maria Salazar, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council, and staff. My name is Paula Devine. I'm here for the Commission on the Status of Women, which we're entitling the commission with a mission these days. And our, our mission goes right along with Cruise Night. We'll have a booth on California and Brand. We will have a dollhouse, and the event is for, or our booth is for Habitat for Humanity. We've donated $5,000 to the Kenwood Project, and we're hoping that on Cruise Night, that if everyone just comes and gives $1, just puts $1 in the house, by the end of the evening, we could have enough to make a very, very generous donation to Habitat. I'd like to introduce my guest tonight. This is Maria Salazar, and she has a few words for you.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor.
You can pull the mic down.
Thank you. Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor and city councilman. My name's Maria Salazar. I live in 321 West Doran, and I will be moving into Palmer Project in about six or seven months because we are building our own house, thanks for Habitat for Humanity. The city of Glendale donates the land to low-income families who are eager to, to own a house, but they are of low income, and there's a lot of boundaries. Therefore, Habitat for Humanity is a good organization. Not only that, it's a family that helps families like mine to fulfill their dream. So I do invite you to come along, donate a dollar or more, because they are donate, they're working on an 11 by 11 for 11 families who are like my family, who wish their best for their kids and for their family. So I do invite you to go there. It's going to be great, and Habitat for Humanity does make a difference for a family like mine. It brings a smile to our, to our face and our heart. Our kids are very happy because they are stable in the city of Glendale. They do not have to move schools. They have a pretty safe school. We live, we're going to have to, we're going to live in a very nice and clean city that cares for its citizens, and it's proven by Habitat for Humanity, and thanks to the city of Glendale for donating the land. And the rest, we could work on with all our hearts, and just thank you for your support, and we'll hope to see... And the rest, we could work on with all our hearts and just thank you for your support and we'll hope to see you there. And just briefly, my family is back there. You'd like to see them, if they'd like to stand up. This is my husband Juan and my son and my daughter, they went outside with the baby, but we're very here and we're very pleased to be here. And we are very happy for Habitat for Humanity because they made our dreams come true. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, so.
Mr. Yasefian.
Before Mrs. Devine sits down, as you know, I will not be here because I have to go to an ICA conference. But just to get you kick-started, I'm going to give you a Benjamin Franklin, it's $100.
Oh, wow.
You can start with that.
That's great. Go ahead, Maria, you go in.
No, no, no. Mr. Kassafian, I don't want to give it, would you please pass that over?
Thank you very much.
Okay, and the rest?
Good luck.
We'll see you Saturday night, right? Thank you, thank you so much.
Paula, I'm not going to be here either, but I'll match that.
Oh, fabulous, thank you.
I'm starting a trend, I guess the rest of them are going to match it also.
I, I hope so.
I see Mr. Quintero shaking his head up and down, so it looks like it.
I will too.
Okay, he is doing?
We'll make our decisions on our own. I do have a wedding in two weeks.
At least you got $400.
Exactly, thank you so much.
I'll see you on Saturday.
We have the cards in the back, so if anybody here would like to match the council, they're right back.
All right, Paula.
Thank you so much.
See you Saturday, Paula.
Get them while they're hot.
Margaret Hammond, followed by Arlene Vidor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff. My name is Margaret Hammond. And as usual, my favorite subject, banquet halls. I read in the paper where there is going to be probably, possibly, and I'm almost positively, what will turn in, the Phoenix over on Central. And what I read in the paper was, yeah, it was a restaurant and now they're enlarging. And now they're going to be like up to 300 people. I don't know what restaurant in Glendale handles 300 people. And, and they were given, again, parking variances. Thought that was interesting. Why is it that every single one of these banquet halls that are morphed from restaurants end up getting parking variances? The Renaissance, Anus, I mean, what's the use? There's like 40 of them, I'd be here, my whole five minutes would be gone talking about just which ones are what. As well as, for instance, the Montrose Connections up there that was a restaurant. And whatever anybody says, they say when you call, we are not a restaurant, we are a banquet hall for private parties. And I personally have called them and had other friends also. Now, this is not right. We've got enough problems in Glendale with parking. And why we keep giving variances and who do those variances affect? The private citizens that live around these banquet halls. There's homes on these streets where, where this Phoenicia is. It has to affect them. If there isn't enough parking in their lot, where are they going to park? On the street, obstructing private homes, driveways, the, on and on. You've heard it all before, you don't need me to go over it again. And yet, you turn around and give another variance for another one for parking. I mean, this is unbelievable. It just goes on and on. Nobody seems to listen as to what's happening in the city. We're so bottlenecked now with parking, you can hardly move at 2 miles an hour at times up and down the streets. The other thing is, of course, the barbecues. And after 10 years of illegal barbecues going on and on outside and the city, it's illegal, it says so in the city papers, which I've read over and over. The article that it's illegal to have outside barbecues and yet, they still go on and on. Nothing is being done about them. And even your city enforcer of the rules about the noxious fumes and so forth is hamstrung. Because the city council told him, put a moratorium on it. Hello, that doesn't sound right to me. And if you don't want to do anything about it, then I am saying to the citizens out there, get on your phone. The ones that are near these banquet halls that talk about the smell and the problems that go on with it, call. 1-800-CUT-SMOG. That is the state. The state law says they're illegal. The city's law says they're illegal, but they keep allowing them. So, what else are we going to do? We have to turn around and take it out of the city's hands then. That would make it much easier. Then nobody on, on the city council has to feel that, well, we're not doing our job or there's no way to get the job done. The state will do it. They'll come out, they said, they'll come out as soon as you phone. All you have to do is pick up that phone and call. And they are very happy to come out and do something about it. I mean, if you had a car sitting in your neighbor's drive that was sitting there, running with fumes coming out the back because they didn't have proper smog, smog control on their car and you were choking on the fumes, wouldn't do you any good to phone the police, would it? So, you would have to call. 1-800-CUT-SMOG. Do something about it. Don't just complain about it to me or to somebody else. It's your duty to call. You're, it's up to you. Other people can't keep doing your, you come to me, but I can't, I'm only one person. And you're all out there and you know you hate it and you don't know what to do about it, and I'm telling you what to do about it. And it's just really dumb not to follow through. All you have to do is provide the time, date, and add, and the address, and the public nuisance problem. And they will be very happy to come out. That's their job, that's what they're paid for. So, let's let them earn their money and call on these problems that we have. If we can't take care of them in the city, then let the state come out and take care of it. Thank you very much.
You, Arlene Vidor, followed by Nancy Kent.
I just want to ask Mr. Starbird a clarification. Did we give a parking variance for that restaurant?
I'm not familiar with that, with that specific.
I know, I didn't vote for a parking.
The council hasn't risen to the council level.
So, I think that needs to be corrected.
Parking, if any, if any variance was given, it was probably at the zoning administrative level at this point.
I read it in the paper.
Yeah. And while we've taken this hiatus with respect to Margaret Hammond's comments about banquet halls and outdoor cooking, you took up this matter. I think Margaret was at that meeting where you had an in-depth discussion of outdoor grilling. And your, your direction was, and the ordinance has yet to come back, but it will, that except for the small outdoor grilling units, the banquet halls would be obligated to comply with AQMD and, AQMD and Health Department standards for any outdoor grilling. And that's what will be embedded in the ordinance.
When will we get the ordinance?
It's going to Plan Commission in August.
Yeah, so September timeframe.
Thank you, my name is Arlene Vidor. I'm here on behalf of the Glendale Historical Society and actually Catherine Yamada was supposed to be here and instead it's me because Catherine had an emergency and she was called away today. But I just wanted to remind the community and council that it is still our centennial year. And in honor of that, we, when we last presented a, an official Glendale pictorial history to the mayor, it was Mayor Menuchyan and now it's Mayor Weaver. So, we would like to kind of re-kickstart our centennial by re-presenting to Mayor Weaver a copy of the book Glendale Pictorial History. We're about six months through our centennial now and in honor of that, we are going to take the Centennial Pictorial Exhibit that we displayed along with the city at the Centennial Celebration and have it on display at Cruise Night this week in the forecourt of the Alex Theater. So, we hope you will come by our booth and everybody will, will, will have the book for sale there. And we'll also have a nice display of historic photos as well as some information and memorabilia about car culture in Glendale. Some of our famous historic drive-ins as well as gas stations. So, just a reminder that our centennial is still being celebrated and I wanted to pass this book on to you, Mayor Weaver. And it is signed by Ms. Yamada. So, here you go.
Having lived here two-thirds of the century, I don't mind perusing it.
Where'd you live before that, Mr. Mayor?
In my parents' future dreams. They're both in Forest Lawn right now, residing. Okay, Nancy Kent, followed by Harry Zavos.
My name is Nancy Kent. I'm a resident of Glendale and Mayor Weaver and council members Yasefian and Najarian and Menuchyan and Quintero. I would like to thank you once again for your service to the community. And a special thanks tonight to Councilman Yasefian for following up on the pending items list and following up on the, on your question about the guidelines for the use of the police reserves. And now I would like to get on to what I came here to speak about tonight. Mayor Weaver and council members and staff and everyone listening, I would like to invite you to a local event that's happening a week from tomorrow night. It's happening Wednesday, July 19th and it is part of a nationwide event that's organized by the Center for Constitutional Rights. It is called Articles of Impeachment Against George W. Bush: A National Teach-In. The closest one to Glendale is at the Pasadena Hilton. It is hosted by former mayor of Pasadena, Bill Paparian, who is also running as the Green Party candidate for Congress to represent the 29th District, Glendale and Pasadena and the other communities in that district. Also at this event will be Stephen Rhodey, an attorney and past president of the ACLU Southern California. And Chris McCray, who is a veteran who served two combat tours in Iraq and is a member of Iraq Veterans Against the War. And by the way, Bill Paparian is also a veteran, he was in the Marine Corps in the Vietnam era. To RSVP for this, you can go to the internet and rather than giving the website, you can just Google impeachment teach-in. I Googled that today and it was the first thing that popped up. If you go to that website, you'll see that these teach-ins are happening throughout the nation, not only in places you'd expect like New York and Chicago, but also cities like Fort Worth, Texas, Charlotte, North Carolina, Charlottesville, Virginia, Scottsdale, Arizona, Nashville, and on and on and on. Again, the impeachment teach-in will be at the Pasadena Hilton, 7:30 PM, Wednesday, July 19th. You should RSVP on the internet and I am sure that former Mayor Paparian would be very honored by your attendance there. Thank you.
Sorry. Harry Zavos, followed by Zavan Kazazian and tag team with Harold Scoggins.
Counsel, my name is Harry Zavos. I am a resident of Glendale and today I would like to address some comments to the Hillside Ordinance, two in particular. One, without slighting any other members of this council, I'd like to publicly acknowledge a debt that I think the city owes to Councilman Yosefian for his clarification and concise clarification of factual issues and legal issues which impinge on those code provisions which deal with hillside development. But my primary concern is to address an issue that's been raised by any number of councilmen in the past and most prominently by Mayor Weaver, who again raised the issue and underscored it two weeks ago in that portion of the council hearings which I observed. And that is the one-size-fits-all 18-foot driveway requirement and the 15-foot setback in the, the hills. Mayor Weaver, as he's done on numerous occasions, as well as some other councilmen, pointed out that this requirement essentially pushes a building out on the Hillside Ordinance so as to exaggerate his, its mass and bulk and may do so unnecessarily. Why do I say unnecessarily? The primary rationale given for that 18-foot driveway is to provide two parking places off-site. Now, it seems to me that instead of having a one-size-fits-all, it would be preferable to have a performance standard, which simply would say that in addition to the garage, any hillside development must provide two off-site parking spaces without specifying that they must be done by an 18-foot driveway, particularly where in some situations, that's not the most efficient and from a design point of view, not the most aesthetic way of doing it. Also, it seems to me that a 15-foot setback would be best, the setback would be best served by a performance standard rather than one size-fits-all 15-foot setback. That is, in a hillside area where most of the houses may have very little setback, a 5-foot setback with no sidewalk, it makes no sense to take a infill lot and require it to be set back 15 feet. And it seems to me a better standard would be a performance standard which takes into consideration the setbacks that are in the neighborhood. Now, that brings me to another point and one which I suspect will got very little traction. I happen to think that we, the City of Glendale, would be best served if we're really concerned about the aesthetic impact of building on infill lots. If we really strengthened our guidelines and had them be performance standards, particularly if those performance standards were keyed to a line of sight from any public street to the particular development. There are all sorts of factors that I'm sure all of you are aware of and I've talked about and brought photographs to illustrate, which can have a set, an aesthetically pleasing effect on hillside development. One is the colors that are used on the building, the fashion material, some rock, maybe some plaster offsets vertically and horizontally. A breakup in the roof line, terracing, landscaping. And it seems to me that if in fact our guidelines were carefully and more tightly put together with performance standards, including visual aids demonstrating these various techniques, we would be well-served instead of monkeying with our Hillside Ordinance yet another time when we did so within the last year. And that brings me to my final point. The problem or the issue of having good design on hillside development is not an easy one. And there are all sorts of factors that interact with each other. You can't separate one from the other that easily. And they also require that there be a certain amount of design expertise, both architects, soils engineers, and the like. So, that something that sounds good when you say it, at least will have some expertise in terms of its feasibility. I, I bring up a point which may be controversial here and that is the notion of an inverse FAR based on steepness of slope. And the working group that you had generally rejected that and they did so for two reasons. One, as the slope gets steeper, what happens is the height of the building gets higher and at the same time, you're reducing the square footage. From a design point of view, what you do is create a space needle, which is not aesthetically pleasing. The other point that was brought up in that working group is that there were two houses, I think it was the Minus House and the Haralbos House, which were reduced by 600 square feet, but the visual impact was not that different. So, it really is a question of design. And it seems to me that you cannot solve these problems, understand how they work with each other, understand the feasibility in a meeting where somebody gets up for three or five minutes, makes their point, somebody gets up behind, after them and makes up a totally different point and then somebody else brings up a third point. What is necessary is, it seems to me, a concerted systematic exploration of each possibility and how it relates to the others. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker Zavan Kazazian and Harold Scoggins.
Yeah, I want to thank Mr. Zavos for pointing out the good work of Mr. Yasefian and his insights.
It's not just me, okay?
And, and Mr. Weaver's comments. I know you guys have some history with this Hillside Ordinance and it certainly.
Today, I'm a genius, tomorrow I'll be something else.
I don't want to go there.
He won't go there.
Every time. I'm waiting for the other things.
Go ahead, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Tonight, we've come before you to announce the Glendale Fire Department Awards Luncheon. In the past, we've had awards banquets for many, many years and it's been more of a internal appreciation and celebration of employees and citizens in the Glendale Fire Department who've done great things for the organization throughout the year. This year, we're teaming up with the Glendale Sunrise Rotary Club and we're doing a Glendale Fire Department and Sunrise Rotary Club Awards Luncheon. And that's what myself and. And that's what myself and Zavvin Kazazian is here tonight to talk about. The event will be held October 13th at the Glendale Hilton. And that week is important because it closes out Fire Prevention Week. So throughout that week, there will be a number of different public education events throughout the community, and we're going to close out that week with a luncheon recognizing fire department employees and citizens in the community who have done outstanding acts for the community.
I just want to add to the chief's comments in that we'd like to invite the City Council, the staff, and the public at large to join us on October 13th. And even though it's Friday, we believe that's a lucky day. And we want to honor the men and women of the Glendale Fire Department. And now, most of you are getting a black and white copy. There will be a number of colored announcements and brochures and things that's going to be all over the public, but we didn't have the color versions available for this evening. You got the color one. Well, I don't know, Bob. I think Mr. Yosefian, you're...
My lucky day.
Tonight is your night.
I should run out there and get a lottery ticket. It looks like the night is my night.
Please join us on October 13th. And as I mentioned, there will be a number of announcements through the chamber, through different organizations, businesses, local community businesses, and we look forward to having all of you join us on October 13th. And with your permission, we'd like to come back and announce it at least a couple of more times here, so please, so that we can keep it. Now, one of the things is that on television, the Glendale TV6, we're going to have these brochures, they're going to be showing a number of times. So please invite anybody and everybody within the city. We look forward to making this a success, and this is the first one, but we also look forward to making it an annual event.
Time and location?
Time and location, once again, is going to be October 13th from 11:30 to 1:30 at the Glendale Hilton.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
See you in the future. Herbert Milano, followed by Jim Dimov.
Wait, 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 wait. Herbert Milano.
It's Jim Dimov.
And then you.
Then you.
Herbert first and then you.
I'm sorry. Take a seat in the front.
Thank you, Mayor Weaver, members of the City Council. My name is Herbert Milano, the city staff. For the last few years, I have come before you to promote transparency and accountability, and I've also come before you to promote the concept of strategic planning. Now, strategic planning is not really a difficult concept. It's really very simple. It allows the City Council to tell the public where we are today and where we're going, what are our objectives. And in light of that, I've asked many, many times, three very simple questions. The first one is, how many new housing units will the city allow every year? And it's a critical question because if we know how many new housing units you will allow, we will know our needs with regard to open space. We will know our needs with regard to developed parkland. We will know our needs with regard to the impact on traffic. We will know our needs with regard to the infrastructure, our roads, road maintenance. We will know the needs with regard to the status of sewers and storm drains and so on. Without that information, it becomes very difficult for us to gauge where we're going. For the last few years, we've had approximately 115 housing units every year, but today we stand to gain close to 3,000, as it is in the pipeline. And I'm really, really worried as to how that will impact our city. Because I don't have the numbers, even though I tried to obtain some of those numbers through the California Records Act. I would like to know what will be the allocation of developed parkland for all of these new residents? If we allow the standard that nationally is accepted as the minimum, which is about one acre per thousand residents as a very minimum, we are in arrears significantly just to take care of the new residents that are coming in. And yet, when I bring these topics up, including during the downtown specific plan advisory committee, we have so many developers there that there is no interest. So when we ask our opinion, these people don't want anything. If they had their say-so, we would have no parkland whatsoever. Every space imaginable, every parcel, we'd be putting, they'd put a building on. There is no connection because they don't live here and they don't experience it. There is no connection when it comes to traffic. So I ask the second question. What should be the minimum average, the minimum average traffic speed on our major roads, on Brand, on Wilson, on Colorado, on Glendale Avenue? And I always get all kinds of excuses and reasons why it cannot be done. We can say, we can take money and allocate it towards improving, but what if we improve it from two miles an hour to three miles an hour? We need to know, because if we know that, we know what our limitations are with regard to the types of buildings that you can put in. Can you put in a 24-story building? What's going to be the impact on the traffic? Our quality of life depends on knowing that information. As I ask these questions, and I try to obtain now information through the California Records Act, I am finding today that I'm giving the runaround. I'm not giving the recast, because these documents cannot be found, or you have to ask for a special permit to get, pay for programming to get the data. This is data that anyone should have in any department to say, what is our status and where are we going? And I believe it cannot happen because you are accountable not to the public, in my opinion, but to the developers, because you need their money to run for office again and again. And so long as you're accountable to the developers, so long as you're accountable to the unions, it becomes very difficult for the public to have their say-so. And that's why so many people come to the City Council, hoping against hope, that when they express their opinions and express their desires, that you will listen. That's why I believe that we need campaign reform. I strongly believe that we need to change the way we finance our campaigns. And there's a national movement to move along those lines, so that you're not so beholden to all of these developers who want to ask for favors and ask for special privileges for their parcels. We could have development and smart development that takes care of our traffic and takes care of our open space and developed parkland. Because for decades now, for decades, our shortage for developed parkland has been ignored, even though in the last couple of years you added a few, you know, micro mini parts out there. But I think that it is time that you begin to think twice about truly listening to the public, because at the end, it is us. It is we who live here. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Jim Dimov.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you, Mayor of the City of Los Angeles, of Glendale, for inviting me, because I was there this morning, actually. And the mayor, which is Mike Antonovich, gave me a chance to share something which was very important. And tonight, it's going to be even more important because I'm going to talk to you for a few minutes about energy. But before that, I would like to know how many of you have paid attention of my short speech, if I could put it that way, last time, and how many of you have taken an action to stop ticketing the people who park where it's written, "No parking during cleaning streets," and this is not fair. We've been ticketing all the time, getting tickets, and have no space to park, and this is not fair. We have been punished for not being supplied with parking spaces. And I hope all of you have taken action about this and stop giving tickets to the people anymore. We're not supposed to be punished for not having place to park. Last night, last Tuesday evening, I spoke a little bit about the two inventions which I have, and one of them, very briefly, is about producing new type of gasoline called Isogas. This was demonstrated in 1979 on Channel 2, and this Isogas is being produced out of garbage, believe it or not. I have the blueprints how to build a plant next to every landfill, and out of garbage, we could be able to produce electricity and Isogas. This Isogas was demonstrated in 1979, like I mentioned a while ago. Bob Dunn was the field broadcaster on Channel 2. He was in ecstasy to see how this Isogas being put into the carburetor, running the car pollution-free, and will cost us 29 cents a gallon. This is a matter of fact. This is not imagination. The other one, which I began to say something, but I could not say anything, actually, because my time was over, and I'm glad there's no limit of time, so I might be able to talk all night long. But nevertheless...
Five minutes.
Five minutes, from now on. Thank you very much.
Bobby's been that way.
Thank you so much. Now, the other one, I found that invention in one of my apartments. I used to have 250 apartments. There lived the greatest mind in the world. He invented how to build an engine, which is called nuclear reactor electrical generator. I hope there are some engineers here who understand the very mayor. That's very good. I'm happy to hear that.
Just pointing a finger at me, not us.
This invention is so great, one pound of nuclear material is equal to 2,500,000 pounds of coal, so much energy. And that nuclear reactor releases the energy as needed, sends it to the electrical generator, which converts it into electricity, which moves the car, the plane, the train, the factory forever indefinitely, for hundreds of years. How would you like to have a car like that? This lady was talking about fumes, no fumes in both inventions. But the second one is so great, I actually, I'm running for governor of California, believe it or not, and real soon you're going to see me on television. KCET invited me to demonstrate my ability to become the governor of California, and within a few years, as governor, I'm going to solve all the problems. I'll more than triple the economy within a few years, and we Californians are going to have so much money, we would be able to pay the national debt of the United States, which is over $8 trillion. And I would like the City of Glendale to support me and to back me up and to even, I need a secretary, I need people to campaign for me, and the City of Glendale should be the one to get this initiative, to put me in the office in Sacramento, and I'm going to actually recall Schwarzenegger. Real soon, I'm expecting to get a lot of money. The City of Los Angeles owes me over $40 million. And I just won one case, not against the City of Los Angeles, but against a person who has robbed me financially a little over $300 million. I'm going to a higher court where I'm expecting to get literally billions of dollars. And I'm going to put all this money into the state of California, and in the city, I'm going to start from the City of Glendale. I'm going to make this city like a diamond in California. We would not have any more need to ask for money to raise the taxes. In fact, as governor, believe it or not, I'm going to wipe all the taxes, no more taxes.
Thank you.
God bless you. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Yeah. Okay, that's last card for oral communication. Okay, I understand everybody is here for nine. As I promised, we will now go to nine. Would you read nine into the record?
At 9A is Director of Planning, continuing from 50206 and 53006 regarding rezoning from R1 to low-density residential floor area District 2 to C1 PPD Neighborhood Commercial Precise Plan of Design for a property located at 702 East Glen Oaks Boulevard. At 9A1, motion continuing the hearing. At 9A2, motion verifying 20% protest. At 9A3, motion to deny general plan amendment and zone change 200603. At 9A4, resolution to adopt the mitigated negative declaration, PEIF 200605. At 9A5, resolution to adopt general plan amendment 200603, amending the land use element map. At 9A6, ordinance for our introduction of zone change 200603. At 9A6A, option 1, zone change to C1. At 9A6B, option 2, zone change to C1 PPD.
Got it? Good.
Yes, that is it.
Okay, this is a complicated one. Here's what's going to happen.
Point of order, I think.
Okay, before opening my mouth, okay.
Before you...
Mr. Najarian.
Mr. Mayor, I had discussed this issue earlier on the podium pertaining to the applicant's M&amp;K design, Dalida Karollian. They were prior tenants in a commercial office building, which I own and interest in. They paid rent for their office space up to, if I'm not mistaken, December of 2005, at which point they moved out. I do have a conflict of interest because I did receive income from them in this matter. I do not feel that it would be appropriate legally or morally to participate in the discussion and the deliberations which may or may not follow this announcement. So I will be recusing myself to the back room, and if you'll give me a buzz when you need me.
We'll do that. Bye-bye. There's the TV back there, you can watch. Truth or consequences or jeopardy?
Actually, the feed channel's on back there.
Okay, as I said, this is complicated, so we're going to go through three steps. One, we're going to look at continuing the hearing first because a request is made. And each step, I'm going to be asking the city attorney to give us guidance on where we're at, and then I will take testimony. I have stacked cards here. We will only talk about the continuance, nothing else at this time. The next stage will be the 20% protest, whether that's legit or not, and we will deal with that independently. You'll only speak on that item. And if we get past all of that and it comes down to the change of zoning, then you'll come up and talk on that. Does everybody understand where we're going? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, subject to Mr. Howard's comments, it seems to me an inter, maybe an intervening point between the determination and confirmation of whether or not a protest exists. If indeed the conclusion is a protest does exist, then it would make sense to determine whether or not, and which, whether or not Mr. Najarian chooses to continue to participate in the discussion, because that'll have an outcome on whether or not there could be the requisite number of votes to continue then with the balance of your hearing.
That's why I said it's complicated.
Okay.
So in stage one...
Depending on the outcome of each step, there might be different avenues or options.
Right.
So the first step, would you please explain what we're doing? I'd like, here first.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the first item tonight for discussion would be the request of the applicant to continue this matter. They have submitted a written, one-page request that the matter be continued. My office met with the applicant and representatives in late June, I believe it was June 28th or 29th, if I'm not mistaken, it was a Thursday. And after discussion, they indicated that they had requested a continuance and the reasons therefore. As a result of that, this council should first address the issue of the continuance, hear from anyone who is willing to and who desires to speak on the propriety of granting or denying the continuance, and then first decide that issue, because the decision on that issue may, depending on which way you go, could either, if it's granted, it would moot the rest of the matter until it's further, until it's, till the next date, or you would then move to the next step on the agenda. It would be, the first item for discussion would be whether to grant or deny a continuance.
Okay, and it does not need to be staff input beyond that, I believe. So I was going to go to the public and Mr. Yosefian, you have comment on that.
I think probably public will also like to know, on the issue of continuance, what is the term of the time for that continuance?
Mr. Howard.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, certainly it would be up to the applicant to indicate the time they need and the reason for the continuance. I can just tell you what my discussions have been with them. They've been indicating approximately 30 to 45 days to address the issues that were raised in our legal opinion relating to the computation of the 20% protest and also the unanimous vote requirement under Article 15, Section 2 of our charter. They may have more information to provide to you and more reasons to ask, to base their request for continuance on than that. I should point out for the record that our office indicated that we had no opposition to the continuance.
Okay, I'd like to hear from the applicant first, while we're speaking for the applicant on the continuance, the reasons for it. on the continuance, the reasons for it. Why haven't you so far and why do you need more time?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman.
Your name, please.
I'm Karen Basmagian, and I represent the applicant. I have only very recently been retained, probably a day or two prior to meeting...
Did you put a card in?
Yes, I did, Karen Basmagian, it's over there.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Prior to...
Are you attorney?
Yes. Prior to meeting with Mr. Howard's office to discuss the various issues, I have reviewed the opinion from the city attorney's office, and it appears that what started out to be a very simple zoning application has turned into more of a complex and volatile mess, requiring more time for everyone to investigate and properly respond as to the memo provided by the city's attorney, the city attorney's office. We discussed the issues at length, then we submitted a letter requesting further information from the city's attorney's office, we got some, but there appears to be some issues with that that we need to go over. Once we obtain all the information necessary, then we will submit the proper opposition to the motion and our legal views as to the legal opinion submitted by the city attorney's office. I would also like to bring it to everyone's attention that the only reason we're here is because the applicant, being a law-abiding citizen of Glendale, when she decided, when she decided to apply for a zoning change, she did contact the city of Glendale and said that, I'm sorry, when she decided to use the property as an office space, she asked the city, is there anything I need to do, any procedure I need to follow in order to, in order to make this property into my own office, private office use? And she was guided by the city, she was guided by the planning department to follow the procedures, and which is the reason we are here today. And again, this is something that has turned into more of a complex and volatile situation than it need to be, so further investigation is must in this matter, and also I think the continuation is gonna assist everyone involved to interpret some laws that seem to be gray area for the future for the city. As well, this, there's no prejudice as to anyone, anyone involved in here because the continuation will remain, everything will remain in status quo, nothing will be changed, in fact is in the benefit of the people who are opposing the zoning change, so therefore we respectfully request that our continuation be granted.
Have you made any progress since you asked for the last continuance?
Well, the progress has been made since then is that we've met with the city's attorney, city attorney's office, Mr. Howard, and we've gone through in detail various issues, and we addressed our concerns as to the need for further information. I wrote a letter, and a response was provided to me, but there appears to be some issue with that, that we need to further contact and negotiate or discuss with the city attorney's office so that we can gather all the proper information to submit the proper opposition.
Mr. Howard, can you state, has progress been made since the last continuance?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Ms. Basmagian did send us a rather lengthy public records request, and Mr. Garcia has been going through that and providing responses to that. There are some issues which, some areas where we may not be able to find documents responsive to the request, there are some areas that invade potentially the attorney-client privilege which you hold, we don't. I don't know, I can't speak for Mr. Garcia or Ms. Basmagian, but I know there has been some communication between the two, and there may need to be further communications to address the remaining outstanding issues in that public records request.
But it appears to be some issues involved in this case that apparently hasn't been addressed in the past, therefore if a proper investigation is done on all sides, I think it's gonna be to the benefit of everyone.
Well, if I may, I think in the interest of the knowledge of the public and the council, what major issues are out there that legal counsel is having to look at?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I certainly can't speak for Ms. Basmagian or her team. The two issues that we are aware of is, one, the calculation of the 20% protest, the quote-unquote frontage for the 20% frontage, and the unanimous vote requirement under Article 15, Section 2 of the charter, if there are more.
There's a bunch more?
There may be more, but those are the, those are the two primary ones that I know we focus on.
Right, those are the two primary ones, however, in order to properly oppose, further information is necessary because the unanimous vote area particularly appears to be a very gray area in California, and at the front of it, our interpretation seems to differ from the city attorney's interpretation, and there isn't a whole lot of case law, therefore in order for us to properly respond, we do need to obtain the information requested from the city attorney's office. Again, they've only followed the guidance of the city and the planning department, and upon when they contacted them first, and said, is there anything we need to do to make this, to make this property into our own office, because their intent was initially to have the property as a family residence for the son, then because he didn't like the property, they decided to just use it as an office space. So in her honesty, our applicant, instead of just turning the property into an office space, she did contact the city and she inquired, and she said, what do I need to do? And she was guided and followed, she was asked to pay certain fees, which she did, so therefore, which is the reason why we're here today, and it has turned into a bigger, complex, volatile situation than it need to be. So I think that a continuance, A, number one, will calm some rather emotions, B, not the important, most important thing is the fact that, you know, investigation is necessary in this case.
I let her have more time because she's representing the applicant. Okay, thank you very much. We'll go to...
Mr. Mayor. I don't think my answer, question was answered. How long is the continuation for?
I would anticipate up to September.
So, and what happens in the meantime at the, at the house?
We may status quo.
Oh, you want 60 days?
What's status quo, because we've seen pictures, cars on the lawn, storage in the garage, storage in the backyard, all construction.
With all due respect, it's nothing any different than any house. I personally drove out there and I had to, had a difficulty finding...
A lawn in the front yard, I haven't seen that in most residential zones.
The front yard is, looks like a regular house.
We'll check code enforcement.
Yeah, I mean, we saw it.
Status code is still residential.
The evidence was provided too, that's why I'm asking.
Right, I don't think there have been...
At one point, I will, I will deal with those because I actually went to the site, I walked around the site, I went inside the site, and I looked at it, and I think some of the evidence that was presented to us, it's a little bit embellished, and it's not true to its current situation, so, and I would address that at that point.
Mr. Mayor, if I may briefly address...
No, I don't want to get into discussion, we have a number of other people I could speak to.
Right, okay.
Not the time for it, this is only on the continuance.
Exactly.
Yes, I walked around the house too. Okay, does anybody else want to speak just on the continuance, nothing else? Come forward. Laurie Collins.
Evening, gentlemen.
Three, three minutes.
Yes, I...
We'll see where that goes.
Okay, on the continuance, we obviously want all the legal issues to be properly addressed by the city. I would request, as you've done in the past, at the last hearing, to afford us an opportunity to review whatever is submitted by the applicants with enough time, sufficient time. The last time, actually, it would have been handed in at 5 o'clock at the end of the day, I would only have till the following Thursday to respond. If you give this applicant 60 days' time to, to do a public records act request and research these issues, I would request that we, we at least have two weeks prior to the hearing in order to review whatever she submitted, and then respond to it so that we can give you an adequate response also. That's the only thing I have to say. I know that my neighbors, the Chokowskis, this is very difficult for them because they have to live next door to this construction office, 7:00 AM in the morning, trucks are coming and making noise, and the house is lit up on the outside. I'd be interested to hear what Mr. Yusefian has to say about the pictures, I think these pictures speak for themselves, these pictures weren't embellished, we didn't go out and, you know, put materials in their backyard or in their garage, certainly didn't park their, the Land Rover on the lawn. So anyway, that's what I would request, and I hope the council would consider our request.
So you think you speak for the majority of the residents that if the continuance is given, that it's okay, but you have at least adequate time of a couple of weeks to respond to anything that is presented by the applicant?
I can't speak for the majority, I can speak for myself, and if, there's other people that are opposed to that, I hope that they'll come up and talk about how it impacts their daily lives.
Yeah, well, because I know, for a fact, I guess I'm approaching 100 emails, everyone says no to it, but none are addressing this particular thing, I mean, they just don't want it, but yet they don't say about the motion to continue, so...
Well, I think very few people know about the motion to continue, and I have six, I have 60 more.
They would have said something if they knew.
They knew about it, and we also, till yesterday, didn't know about Mr. Najarian going to recuse himself. We have 60 more signatures.
Okay, so anybody else wants to speak just on the continuance?
Thank you.
Mr. Murray, their hands were up first, in the back, have a seat in the front right here. Two beat you with their hand up. And your name as you come forward, or when you get here, I mean, Rita Kocowski?
Yes, sir.
Oh, Polish.
Half of me, the other half's Irish.
My son-in-law's gonna be half, is half Polish too.
We live next door to 702 East Glen Oaks, and my biggest concern is for the welfare of my father. These people have called the police department on us because they object to my father walking on their driveway while he waters his lawn. They're afraid he's gonna fall and sue them. They don't like me because I take pictures, and pictures seem to have a lot of incriminating facts to them. For my father's Father's Day present, I had planned to give him a sprinkler system in the front yard, but now I can't do it because they'll arrest the workers because they'll be on their driveway. This type of stress is not what you want to live with day by day by day, and I just, I don't think it's fair to my father, and I don't think it's fair to all the other residents who have been able to pull their information together in a timely fashion. You gave them six weeks this last time, and they still can't get it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, that's all I have to say.
Mr. Howard, can I ask a question? If we did this, I said, status quo, what does status quo mean in your eyes?
Status quo means that the property is zoned R1 residential, it remains R1 residential. If it's being operated in a manner which is inconsistent with R1 residential, code enforcement will have to take a look at it. Status quo is the current status of the property which is zoned R1, and it would be allowed to be used for typical R1 uses.
Okay, thank you very much, who else wants to speak? Mr. Murray?
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, city staff, I'll be very brief, and I'll address only the continuance. It seems to me that one who operates a commercial business from a residential zone home should not be rewarded for breaking the rules, and what you gentlemen are considering here with the continuance is to allow him to continue to break the rules by operating a commercial operation out of a residential home. That, gentlemen, is not equity. This case should be heard today and decided upon quickly. Every delay allows this property to be used in a fashion that is not appropriate to the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wants to speak just the continuance? And your name?
My name is Susan Roberts. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff. I just want to say that I don't think that they should have a continuance. On May 30th, they were supposed to be prepared to deliberate on this particular matter of the 20%, and you allowed them to have a continuation until today, and now they're asking for two more months. I don't think it's fair to create more stress on the Kachowskis, and having us come back, this is the third time, it'll be four times, having us come back again and again and again and getting nowhere.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that, uh, 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 all of that? Okay, is that the last, okay, one more, on the continuance only.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, staff, thank you. Even though Karen addressed the reasons for the continuation, I would like to address...
Your name for the...
Shoyik Yipremian, Yipremian Consulting. I would like to address the fact that at the last meeting, we did not have a copy of the legal opinion which we obtained a day or two after the last meeting, so we did really needed the time to go over that legal opinion. We did discuss the matter with various attorneys specializing in land use and zoning and environmental law. We have recently talked to another attorney just yesterday. Yes, we apparently retained him, and he would like the time to go over some of the documents again to make sure that we do have proper response.
Okay, now explain one thing to me. Previous lady up, Katrina, Karine?
Karine, right.
Yes. She said things will remain status quo until the 11th or whenever it is. And you just heard what the city attorney said, is status quo, no business, it's residential, period. Are you willing to stop the business there and maintain it as a vacant residential place until that date? I mean, if you want the continuance, he's giving you the legal opinion, and there's plenty of residents, including the hundreds that have written us, that will make sure that we call code enforcement out to make it happen. So what is your desire?
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, the fact that we do have an application and with the city, we have three separate applications, environmental review, general plan amendment, and a zone change application still pending, so we are hoping that they can continue the use of the property as is until such decision is made on those three applications.
Thank you. Mr. Howard?
Well, I'm not sure what the response to that is, there, as Ms. Yipremian said, they're hoping to be able to continue to use the property, however, that's not the legal basis, that's not the legal definition of status quo, when the status quo is the current zoning. The current zoning is R1, status quo would be R1, typical R1 uses, I don't believe I indicated no business, I indicated typical R1 uses. Typical R1 uses are what a normal property and R1 use could be used for, that's status quo under the law.
So the question again, do you want a continuance? Take your chances on a continuance, and do the status quo, which means no business operating out of there. It's your choice.
Well, our plan is defined as residential, single-family, all the office uses are permitted as part of home occupation...
With a proper permit for office use.
Right, as a home occupation permit.
Yes, which you don't have. So the question tonight is, what do you want?
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I may, they can't just close up and leave if you want them to go find another office, they need time to go find another office. In the meantime, they...
Code enforcement would go out and give serve them notice and say you have X amount of days to cure.
Right.
Whether it be a week, two weeks, I don't know what code enforcement does in these cases.
It's a normal administrative process, does take some time.
So...
It's not an overnight circumstance.
Do you want to relocate?
Will comply with whatever the stated requirements are.
Well, I'm just asking, I mean, we got a motion here on a continuance.
Right.
But if you're not gonna move out, then why the continuance? Continuance only means that you will relocate temporarily on the business while the six weeks so you can do the legal investigation and come back to us again.
Well, again, the reasons for continuance is for us to properly address the legal opinion.
It's good, so which do you want? Continue tonight, take the time to investigate, relocate for the time? One speaker at a time.
I would like the attorney to address that.
Which attorney's gonna address it? Simple question, simple question. Okay, Karine?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, since R1 does allow for home office use and all it requires is a permit, during the time while the continuance is pending, my clients can apply and obtain a permit for that. Then, once we come back for a hearing, then that's when the decision can be made. Then, once we come back for a hearing, then that's when the decision can be made.
Question, how long does it take to obtain a home use permit? One week, two weeks, a month?
It, it's just a couple of weeks at most, but I should bring to your attention that there is a limit on floor space. Only 10% of the floor area of the dwelling can be used for the commercial occupation. There are other limits that apply as well.
Because it is a residential, so you're only using a certain square footage for the home use. Very restrictive.
Small part of the offices, the house is being used as a home office anyways, so I don't think there will be a complication to cure the problem by applying for the permit while pending the hearing. That cures the problem. And again, when I specified status quo, I was referring to the zone not being changed to a commercial zone.
Yeah.
So therefore, to relocate the entire business, I think, would be inequitable. And if Mr. Kowchowski is referring to being harassed, our clients were the ones harassed, and they were forced to call the police because.
Ma'am, I don't care to get into that. I asked a very simple question. Will have to maintain as a residential, you can apply for a home use permit, which takes a couple of weeks, but it's a very small percentage of the dwelling unit.
Which is fine.
The rest, the rest has to remain as residential.
Then pending the, pending the hearing, that's fine. Our clients can do that.
Okay. Okay, then, as I understand it, you want to, you want to see if we'll pass a motion to continue the hearing. Tomorrow, you apply for a home use permit. It'll be evaluated to see if it's legally possible to do it in this particular case.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and the reason I said it would take a couple of weeks is there's a 15-day appeal period that follows our decision. The decision can be made almost immediately when the application's complete, but I wanted to.
Appeal is by anybody that objects.
Any interested party who wants to take it to the board of zoning appeals.
Who goes, who, who does the appeal go to?
BZA, Board of Zoning Appeals.
Which means another 30 days to hear, which means another, and if it gets appealed to us, it's another six months.
But it can't be used as a home office until the appeal process is done.
Not supposed to.
Okay. That means you're gonna relocate until you get clear through it, because I would presume that somebody is gonna appeal it to the BZA, if it even gets that far. So it's.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Esafian?
It is my understanding, I wish Neighborhood Services, somebody from there was here. It is my understanding, when there is a violation of the municipal code and Neighborhood Services goes after them, a notice to cure is issued, and generally, they will call them in, and they will halt enforcement so long as there is an application pending in front of the city council, in front of the city. So they could go and apply for something, and if, if they apply for something, they can still continue to use their facilities until that issue is resolved. That has always been the case, where they have illegal fences, whether they have, I don't know, anything that is illegal, they, they, the Neighborhood Services sends them a, here's your notice cure, and the way to do this, you gotta go get, pull a permit. And the minute the guy goes in there and pulls a permit, they can still use their facility until such time as they actually do the correction. Right?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, that is generally correct. Unless it's an immediate health or safety hazard, the practice has been for Neighborhood Services to go out and give up individuals an opportunity to cure a violation.
Right, and, and, and to an extent.
It's within their, it's within their discretion.
Right.
It's within their discretion to determine how much time. They may speed up the process, depending upon how problematic it is, and they may follow the regular process, as I indicated before, normal administrative process.
And at the end of the day, Mr. Mayor, as I walked through the place and looked at the place, you, I didn't, I don't know, unless they basically cleaned the place and they knew I was coming in advance, which they didn't, there was not even a leaf on the ground. There were about three or four doors that were against the back of the garage, that's about it. The rest of the area was clean. I walked inside, I wanted to know what the inside was. Basically, it's a house. It has a kitchen, it's got bathrooms, it's got its regular rooms, nice hardwood floors, beautiful walls, completely redone, nice windows, but just the furniture is different. So when you walk into the, the living room, actually, the fireplace is there, it's nice couches and everything else, but when you go to the dining room, instead of a dining room, it's a conference table. A different kind of a dining room. And when you walk into the bedroom, you don't see a bed there, you see a desk there. Those are the only changes I, I, I noticed. This is not one of those places that they bought this house and they're turning it into a plating company, for God's sake. This is just a house, that they're using it for office purposes. It's not as bad, because I was very much concerned. I thought it was really bad. And I went there to see, after seeing the pictures on last Wednesday, I go, jeez, I don't want that. So I drove there, I parked, found out I couldn't park in front of their house because there's a red curb, because there's a fire hydrant there, so I had to park a little bit further down. And I walked up to it, and I went through, roaming around, and I'm surprised she didn't call the cops on me, because she walked out, she goes, what are you doing back there? And then she realized who I was. But, you know, it's, it's not a type of situation that I would say is hazardous to the community. It's not a type of situation that I say, this is one of those things that they're, they're not running a house of ill repute from there. I mean, it's just an office.
And why shouldn't this case be any different than what the practice and procedure has been done by the city? And again.
I'll get to that. I'll get to that. I do recommend you water the front lawn, so it's not brown, like I've observed every day.
It is brown.
It is brown. You don't do that in a residential area, and I suggest that you allow the neighbors next door, if they have to water something, to work with them, to allow that to occur in the interim.
And, and, Mr. Mayor, I did ask that question, and I was told they are trying to kill the lawn, because they would like to replace it with different type of ground covers and flowers.
He said, she said, I'm not going there. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Howard, I want to get this straight again. If we go with this continuance, then code enforcement can go out and say you're not in compliance with R1, give them X amount of days to cure. In the meantime, they can continue to operate a commercial business in a residential zone during that period that they have to correct. And based on the appeal process, whatever, that could be two or three months. Is that my misunderstanding?
Now, I, I'm not going to sit here as the city attorney and tell you that they can continue to occupy the property in violation of a law. What I can tell you is what the normal process is. The normal process is if someone is, is operating property inconsistent with the code, that code enforcement goes out, depending upon how egregious the problem is, depending upon whether it's an immediate health or safety hazard, they will normally issue a notice. Sometimes they will hold an office conference where they'll bring the individuals in, but they will give them some time to cure. There's also the additional issue has been, has been pointed out, that typical residential use can include home occupation if a permit is, is acquired. Our normal, code enforcement, normal practice is that if someone is violating the law, there is an opportunity to correct that. But again, that changes on a case-by-case basis. I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't, it's not a black and white rule, that every case, you get X number of days. It really depends on the nature and the facts of each specific case, but the general process is that through the administrative process, it does take time for the matter to work its way through to code enforcement and possibly even ultimately to my prosecutor.
Well, I, I presume that by tomorrow morning, code enforcement will know about this and be out there.
I'm not certain they haven't already, I don't know.
Yeah, well, for watching TV, they are.
Mr. Mayor, just, just for the record, a number of months ago, the applicant did approach me in terms of whether they could use the house as an office while they were going through the process. And I did inquire from staff, and they told me the exact same thing, which I relate to the applicant, that as long as you're going through the process, the code enforcement will be put on hold until the results are, no.
Okay.
So, just so that's, that's out.
Okay, so the code enforcement is put on hold.
Hold until the process is completed.
What they'll do is they'll send their letters out, but ultimately, they won't send it to our office until the process is done.
Till it works its way through.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, though, I think in that regard, those things that might be considered commercial uses, like storage of equipment, that are gonna be found to be rather egregious by the residential adjoining properties, those kinds of things, I don't think we would normally place on, for example, parking on the front lawn.
There are no equipment right now, and we can, I'm sure.
I think, I think those kinds of things, we should be sensitive to even during the interim, whether it's the brown lawn, or parking on the front yard, or storing construction equipment there, or materials there. Those kinds of things, it would be very inconsistent with the adjoining uses. My suggestion would be that, that the applicant agree, if you do continue this, to abate those uses, address the brown lawn situation, and if, and if we do find them later on, even though they could be still attempting to process the permit, code enforcement should be trying to address those issues. So the uses don't be, so the uses aren't in conflict with the adjoining neighbors, even during the interim.
Mr. Mayor, if I may briefly state that.
Please, please, I've given you way more time than you should have already.
I'm sorry, I was just gonna say that they've done every step that they've taken, they've taken pursuant to the advice from the city and the planning department, and therefore, it will be inequitable for them right now to shut the business down pending the legal issues.
I don't have any report or anything in front of me of what staff said or did when this happened. I mean, I'm sorry, I just don't have it. Mr. Manukian?
Are you willing to water the lawn and not park on the lawn?
Let me, can I just say something?
Oh, wait. Okay, are you another speaker?
Yes, I am.
On the continuance, in your name?
Yes, in regards to watering the lawn.
Name for the record.
Okay.
Okay. In regards, issue number one, you had an issue with a car being on, on the lawn.
We saw pictures.
Huh, I know. The only time, I mean, they're, they're out there ready to take pictures any second that they, that they can get, any chance that they can get, okay? Especially when, in regards to the little kids being in there at nine o'clock at night, they take pictures of them. But in regards, in regards to, in regards to watering the lawn, or being, first of all, having a car on the lawn, we have two cars that are on the driveway, for example. If one car needs to go out, the first car that needs to go out, the second car goes on the lawn, okay, and comes back and goes back in the spot until the other car goes out. You guys know how busy Glen Oaks is, okay? Number two, in regards to, excuse me, I'm saying, I'm speaking.
Please, people.
In regards to the, the lawn being brown, okay? The lawn is brown because we were told to, for, for it to be, to stay that way until this whole entire situation gets resolved by the city, okay? If you would like us, I know, it's a he said, she said, Mayor, you're right.
I know.
You're right, you're right, I agree. Tomorrow morning, I will have three guys over there, if you'd like, to take out that lawn and put it in your lawn.
It's not what I like.
But that's what you're requesting, that's not, that's not the issue.
I'm just saying.
That's, but that's not the issue.
I'm just saying.
Watering the lawn or anything else like that is not the issue. Having things in the, inside the garage is not the issue, because I can guarantee you, 90% of the homes on Glen Oaks Boulevard, and including our neighbors, have storage, use their garage as storage. They park their cars on the driveway.
Sir.
Yes.
All I know is that you are not in compliance with the codes of this city.
But we're trying to change that, Mayor.
Yes, but you're occupying and using.
But we are allowed to do that until.
Sir, please.
Yes.
You're using it for a purpose that is not permitted on the current code. We have seen pictures that I have to sit here and believe they were not manufactured.
Of course.
That's all I have to go by.
Of course, of course.
Now, we're gonna let the system take care of it if this motion passes.
What I'm trying to say is, we were told, okay, and then again, this is he said, she said.
So let's not go there.
But, but what I'm, what I'm trying to say is, we were, we were, what we're complying with is that the fact that we're trying to get the zone changed in accordance to whatever we do.
Understood.
And in the meantime, we're, I think, from what I, from what I know, we can, we can occupy the property as an office.
We just had, we just had this discussion, sir. Sir, no, I don't need to have, have more discussion on this. I think we've heard it all, what can be done in the interim if this motion passes.
Problem is, one more thing. Just like, for example, if there's an air conditioning unit on top of a roof, that's not allowed to be there, okay? If you file a variance, you don't have to take out the air conditioning, air conditioning unit from the roof, because in the city of Glendale, you're not allowed to have one. You can file a variance for that being there, in the meantime, you don't have to bring it down, and then if you, if variance files, you don't bring it back up.
I know, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's the exact same thing with us.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have any more cards, or anybody want? Okay, one more speaker on the continuance only. Do you have a card in? Please fill out a card and turn it in after you speak.
Linda Burns, Mayor Weaver and Councilman, nothing's going to change, nothing, if you vote to allow this continuance. Nothing will change. I live a block and a half away, and I've observed the cars parking on the lawn. I've observed a business being run out of that property, and I'd like to know, I believe it's 10%, you're allowed to use 10% of your home, how many square foot would that be in this particular house? They're not living in this house. It's not being used as a home, and if there is, pardon me, I'm not even speaking.
Please, please, just talk.
It's not being used as a home.
Mr. Mayor, the conversation needs to be directed through the mayor to the city council.
That's what I'm trying to say, please, just talk to us.
I'm trying, okay. Not being used as a home, and it's sort of, there's no reason why anyone needs more time to have this dealt with. I think it should be heard tonight. A continuance is just going to muddy the waters some more. It needs to be dealt with.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I get heard from everybody who wants to speak on the continuance. There's a motion to continue the hearing. Yes, Esafian?
Let me, I'm gonna talk about the continuance issue. Part of reasons for a continuance issue is to check two things. One was the 20%, the second one was whether or not it requires five votes. The 20% is pretty much blown out of the water, because based on the city attorneys.
That's the next one.
And, and here, you'll see there's a 70%.
That's next.
So that 20% is gone. So the only thing that needs to be clarified is whether or not there's a requirement because there's a 70% or anything over 20%, whether it requires five votes or not.
Okay, but there's one clarification, Mr. Esafian, we haven't voted on the 20% protest yet.
I know, I know. But, but I like to get, well, part of it, we, we, and, and this is.
To dismiss it until we vote would be foolhardy.
Right, and, and so I like to go back to the, this is, this is the reason for the applicant to have a continuance. And this is on this particular item. This is on C-23 of the, the charter. Thank God, the city of Glendale, we always have a copy of the charter in our drawers. It's in here, and this is the new version, so it doesn't have any markings on it, I just did one, so. It says, "No amendment changes, supplements, or repeal of a regulation or of the boundaries of a district established by any ordinance passed under the above-mentioned provisions of the charter shall be made except by a four-fifths vote of the council." Okay? This is talking about adoptions of zoning matters and so on and so forth, so it requires a four-fifth vote. And if at any time of the hearing thereon, a protest against such amendment, supplement, change, or repeal is presented duly, signed, and acknowledged by the owners of the 20% or more of the frontage of property, which will be directly affected by the proposed amendment, supplement, change, or repeal, or by the owners of 20% of the frontage of property, which is immediately adjacent thereto, either in the rear, or the sides, or across the street, no such amendment, change, supplement, or repeal shall be adopted except by unanimous vote of the council.
Okay.
Okay? So it basically says unanimous vote after they had talked about the four-fifths vote, which means it requires five out of five.
And that's after the 20% protest vote, which is number two, and we're still on number one.
Right, so.
Continuation?
And, and, and the reason, Mr. Mayor, I'm bringing this out is because I would be more than happy to continue it if there was something that could change. Last time, they asked for a continuance, they were at 20%. I thought that maybe they can recalculate things, and if it was 18 and a half percent, percent, nineteen and a half percent, maybe they didn't. The reality is the twenty went to a seventy. So in my mind, you continue this for two weeks, you continue it for sixty days, it's not gonna solve the problem. All it's going to do is, it's gonna drag this out for the applicant, and it'll be in more of a weird no-no land. They have another option. I don't know why they went through this process in the first place. They could have asked for a change of use variance, or they could have done something else. But this whole business of zone change, I don't know why they even went there. Now, I wasn't there, Mr. Manukian tells me, this happened because the planning director told them, this is the avenue to pursue, to do this. I'm sorry to say, but the planning director misled them down the path. And what was even worse is, as I watched the planning commission, was they went further to say, "It's not enough to just change the zone on this property, let's change the zone on the rest of the street," from people who didn't even ask for it in the first place. So sometimes, some of our staff members do things and dig holes that some of us fall, end up falling in it, and we have to climb out. But I'm not gonna dig it any deeper than it already is. I'm in the hole. They're in the hole, because somebody else dug the hole and put them there. It's not fair to them, it's not fair to the neighbors, it's not fair to us, having to sit here and deal with this. We know who caused it. So the right thing to do, in my mind, is not to continue this, deal with this thing once and for all, and get it over with, so they know what to do with their lives, and they know what to do with their lives, and we know what to do with our lives, and move on.
Mr. Manukian.
I more or less agree with my colleague. However, there is, my colleague, Mr. Yusefian, however, there is a small issue of unanimous vote, whether that would mean in a case like this, where one of the council members has chosen not to participate in, or has a conflict, at that point, there is no unanimous vote. And if the twenty percent, as Mr. Yusefian said, protest is valid at that point, what is the, what is the situation? Do we have a hearing or don't we?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think you know our opinion, and that's one of the issues in contention with Ms. Basmagin and their legal team, and that is whether or not unanimous vote of the council means five required votes of the council, as opposed to unanimous vote of those council members that are present and are able to vote. Certainly, that's an issue. Our interpretation of the code, as you know from our legal opinion, and they have a copy of it, is that the charter means what it says, says what it means, and it would lead to an absurd result to require anything less than a full five votes with, of all the council members, because of the fact that you have a four-fifths requirement without a protest. It would lead to an absurd result to then require either an equal or lesser amount when you have the twenty percent protest. It would make, render that meaningless. So our opinion is that it requires five members of the council to vote. Our opinion also is that if you cannot muster the requisite number of individuals to cast those votes, a hearing is a futile act, and the matter should be denied without a hearing, because, again, with, on those specific facts.
Well, that's, if I may complete my thought, if they want to investigate whether unanimous vote means four or five, and have a legal opinion as to refuting what the city attorney is saying, I think having a continuance is valid, just based on that issue.
Mr. Mayor. Second, Mr. Cantaro.
Okay, well, and I interpret his comments right now, that if we agree to not have the continuance, if we agree to hear it tonight, then Mr. Najarian has to come back and decide whether he's going to be conflicted out or not. If he decides that he feels that he's conflicted out, then the point is moot. There isn't gonna be a hearing, and we're done. If he decides to participate, then we could have a hearing.
That's, that's the point.
Mr. Yusefian.
I think some of us, especially you, Mr. Mayor, and I, were around when the hillside ordinance was passed.
Never heard of it.
And, and if you remember, in 1993, we were sitting on the other side, and the person who was sitting in my seat was Mr. Jutres. And, and we were about to take a vote, and John Gregg, Lee Gregg got up, and they had a petition in their hand, and they said, "We have twenty percent vote of the property owners of the hillsides, and we file a protest," and that would require all five council members to vote. It was very obvious from all the deliberation that had gone through that the council at the time had maybe four votes, but definitely not a fifth vote. And I understand, I remember Mr. Howard had to take all those information back and look and see whether or not they had the twenty percent. And when they came back, they basically said that they did not have the twenty percent, consequently did not require Mr. Jutra to, to vote on this. I can tell you, and the reason I'm saying this is, no offense to the attorneys that the applicant has hired, but knowing John Gregg and knowing Sal Gangee, the attorneys that they hired at the time charged, I don't know, hundreds and thousands of dollars to these people. These were not just your average attorney who charges four hundred and fifty dollars an hour. They were, he sneezed, charged four hundred and fifty dollars, for it comes to what the hourly rate was. And if there was a way that they could have figured out to get around this, they would have done it then. And we went through it again during the town center, and we had Galleria who went through the same exercise. They went over the charter, they hired their attorneys, poured them over, and tried to see if it would require four or five votes, and then the same thing happened. The town center, Mr. Caruso spent a lot of time, because he was worried that he may not have the five votes, and he wanted to make sure if there was a way to get around that. And in the end of the day, the results were the same. So that's why I think, while the applicant can spend more money, end of the day, it's gonna be the same result.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Manukian.
In both cases, there were five individuals who were attending the hearing and who could vote.
Yes.
The situation today is different, that we don't have five individuals who can participate in a hearing, therefore we don't have the hearing. Does the applicant have the constitutional right to a hearing? That's the question.
That's one question that they raise, and our position is that they have a right to a hearing if the votes can be mustered, but they assume the risks of, they assume the risks of the fact that, that they may not have the requisite number of votes to meet that supermajority requirement.
Not the votes.
Or the voters.
Voters, right.
Yes, they may not have the requisite number of voters-
Right.
-to meet that supermajority requirement. That's a risk that they take. We don't believe it offends procedural due process.
And the question is, did they, are we denying them the due process?
Our, our view is no.
Their view is yes.
And that's one, and again, with deference of the applicant, that's one of the issues they want to take a look at, and try to provide some case authority, and we've indicated that we'd certainly be open to seeing and reviewing that case authority, and I think Ms. Collins as well would like the opportunity to review that case authority, should this council grant a continuance. And I'm not suggesting that you should or you shouldn't, just pointed out that our office, earlier, as I noted, our office didn't have any opposition to it.
Mr. Cantaro.
Unless there's an attorney-client privilege, can you tell us whether there, whether you feel or your office feels there's a conflict for Mr. Najarian?
I think that's been stated already publicly at the last meeting that we had regarding this. The conflict exists now, he's recused himself. Once the, if we get to the next step, and the twenty percent protest is verified by this council, then our opinion is, and the law is fairly clear on this, that there is no longer a legal conflict under the legal required, legally required participation exception to the Political Reform Act, and that with certain disclosures, Mr. Najarian could legally participate. The question becomes whether he does, whether he wants to or desires to participate, but legally, our opinion is that he could participate.
We have to get through number one and through number two to get to that point-
Yes, sir.
-where he answers that.
And, Mr. Mayor, and I don't think we need, we've heard about number one, but I think we need to go through number two. Number two will make the determination for number one.
Right, I agree.
Because if, if the twenty percent, if Mr. Najarian says no, then there is a reason for them to go and, and do the study, to see whether or not it's unanimous here or not. If Mr. Najarian says, "Fine, I have no other option, I'm obligated because there's a twenty percent, legally I can do it," then you have a five council members, and then we will decide whether we want to hear it or continue it.
Mr. Starbird.
Mr. Mayor, a question for Mr. Howard. This thought just comes to mind relative to Mr. Najarian's conflict and it being relieved if indeed five votes is required and a protest exists. With respect to FPPC and his conflict, would, can he rely on your opinion, or should he, should he have that opinion from the FPPC?
Well, legally, my opinion or the opinion of my office cannot shield him from civil responsibility for a violation of FPPC regulations. However, I'm not patting my office on the back, but we have an excellent track record in interpreting the Political Reform Act, the FPPC regulations, and in this particular case, the guidelines are pretty clear under the legally required participation exception. While we can certainly seek written advice, and that'll take at least thirty to sixty days, they have a minimal staff, and they will provide you with, with written advice, which you can rely on, based upon a specific set of facts.
It did just, and I wasn't aware of how long it took, I mean, but it did just come to mind that if any of us were in Mr. Najarian's shoes and chose to vote, the only way that participation becomes bulletproof, so to speak, is if he actually has a letter from the FPPC backing up your opinion.
Yes, because the FPPC knows that under the factual scenarios outlined to them, their opinions, their, what they call requests for formal written advice, if they give you an opinion based upon that request, and it's based on that factual scenario, and if it turns out later on that someone files a complaint, and it turns out that their, through their analysis is that it was incorrect, you're able to rely on their legal opinion.
But that would be his choice.
That's his choice.
Now, if we go to number two, and verify the twenty percent, the applicant's gonna say, "Well, I can't speak to that, because I need the continuance in one to get to the point where I can actually debate the point." So if we go to number two-
Ninety percent is pretty straightforward.
We need to, we need to deal with the twenty percent so we can deal with Mr. Najarian to see what he's gonna say.
Didn't they say that's one of the main-
We don't want to guess it.
The continuance, that's one of the main things?
Well, that was when he was twenty percent, now it's seventy.
Actually, it's, it's over seventy now, but I, and I, again, that's based on our calculations. I don't know if one, the, the planning consultant for the applicant has a different means of calculating the frontage. I know we did talk about, for example, the wash area, and whether or not that wash area would then be included in this entire boundary where these, affecting the zone change, which would, if the wash area were included, greatly reduce that percentage, or greatly increase the area upon which you base your twenty percent threshold, and whether that changes, whether it should be incorrect. And our office opinion is that the wash is in frontage, and the wash is government property, and that charter provision was never intended. Again, it would lead to essentially an absurd result of government controlling.
And the two properties adjacent to them that have signed this, they also back into the same exact wash area, so whatever they gain, they also gain.
Yeah, our, again, our position, well, it's, it's, again, it's a numerator-denominator issue, it's the area that you look at for determining where you, whether you have, whether, within the percentage you have twenty percent, so if that, if you add that wash area, that just increases the area, produces the percentage.
Is the wash frontage? If the wash is frontage, and the wash doesn't, can't protest, in which case the amount of protest you have is a smaller number versus the denominator, which is the entire frontage area.
And again, whether or not that affects it, I don't know, but our opinion is that the wash is not frontage. And, and, well, we have two reasons. One, it's not frontage, and two, it's government property, and to allow government property to control under that charter provision, which was designed to protect private property interests, would again, in our view, lead to inconsistent or absurd results.
So how much discussion and testimony do we need in order to jump from number one to number two and determine if the twenty percent, if there's more than twenty percent frontage? Do we need more discussion, or should I throw it up in the public and let the public say, or do you want to?
I think it's pretty straightforward. Both adjacent property owners have signed, and both LLC members have signed for the dentist's office that's next to them. I don't see any contention with the twenty percent.
Then it looks like there's-
If you were gonna have a discussion about the twenty percent, the public should be given the opportunity to address it.
Right on.
Let's do number two.
You might want to do that before you vote on number one.
We've now moved to number two without a decision on number one. How many people want to speak on the protest? One, Laura Collins, up in center.
Good evening, gentlemen. Laura Collins, I, I agree with the city attorney's opinion that you can't include the wash in the frontage. It would just be really an absurd result. I mean, that would mean the wash is owned by County Flood Control, and no one could ever have a valid protest anywhere along the flood control. What if your property abutted the freeway? You'd have to call, count all of Caltrans' property? It's an absurd result. We have seventy-eight percent of the people or the property on either side who have protested as a valid protest. I've talked to these people, and they are absolutely vehemently opposed, and for one reason, because the applicant is now parking their car, their Range Rover, at the dentist's office, when they don't park on the lawn. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else want to talk just on the protest?
Sure.
Shall I?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, members of city council, Shawikya Premyan, again, advisor to the client. Again, when we look at the twenty percent determination by the city attorney's office, there were two main questions, I should say, not errors. One was, again, the wash wasn't counted, which under the charter, it says rear of the property. So if, it doesn't say it should be government-owned or private property. So that's one item we wanted the attorneys to investigate. The second question was the 904 Howard, only the frontage on Glen Oaks was counted, and according to the zoning code, if it's a corner property, the entire frontage of that property should be counted, including Howard. So we did see some areas of concern, that's why we did want to continue this matter to further investigate those two issues, the wash calculation, as well as the Howard property calculation. And now, again, we heard that the commercial property next to my client's property has also submitted a protest. Again, we do not have a copy of that, so we would like to get all this resolved before we, we do this hearing. So we, again, respectfully ask for a continuance.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the protest? Susan Roberts?
Yes, Susan Roberts. Frontage is frontage. I agree with the city attorney, and I, I mean, I don't understand what is so difficult to understand about frontage. Frontage is not the wash, which is behind the buildings. Frontage is along the street. Thank you.
Thank you. That it? Go ahead.
Can I ask a question?
Mr. Manukian.
Mr. Howard, with counting the, the issues that they raised, won't it still be twenty percent with the-
I honestly don't, well, counting the 904 Howard property, even though we disagree with that, it would still be well over twenty percent. The commercial property protest is, we've certified that as valid. The wash, I just don't know. I don't know if we've done a calculation on whether or not the wash would reduce this down below twenty percent or not. I turn to Mr. Garcia or the planners, I don't know if they've, they've calculated that.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mike Garcia, Legal. I don't have the exact number, but when we figured out, if you included the portion of the wash that ran along the street that's behind the properties, that, that would knock out any potential protest, twenty percent protest. In other words, even if you'd included the 904 property, if somebody from 904 Howard had submitted a protest as well, you, and if you concluded the wash, all three of those protests still wouldn't account for the twenty percent, which is part, reason why we concluded that incorporating the wash as part of the twenty percent calculation wouldn't make sense, because in essence, you're knocking out the private, the right of all the private property owners that have adjacent frontage from submitting that twenty percent protest. So it was, it was something in the neighborhood of a thousand feet.
But the charter says rear as well, it doesn't say government-owned, as they mentioned, I just saw that.
It's properties to the rear, and frontage is defined in our municipal code as frontage- in our municipal code as frontage on a street or a way or an alley and there are some out-of-state cases which go into that. And that's, I think, I mean, we believe our, our legal opinion is pretty solid, but we're open to other authorities and pursuant to the conversation we had, Mr. Garcia and I had with the applicant's legal team, we've indicated if you've got authorities to the contrary, we'd be happy to look at it. Our opinion is not cast in stone. If we didn't see something out of Ohio or Nebraska, there's certainly nothing in California that we found, but our code defines frontage, our code defines street, our code has all those definitions, but we're open for, to any other authority should they have them.
Mr. Yosefian.
Okay, I want to go back. Mr. Garcia talks about the wash. I'm just trying to understand that. Let's say for sake of argument, wash is part of it because it actually faces the street south.
I think it's Monterey.
Monterey, okay. How much of the wash do you count? This is the Verdugo Wash. It goes for miles. How far? Is it immediately behind the properties that count?
That's, that's part of the problem, actually, Mr. Yosefian, but just so you know, that portion of the wash that's bounded by those two streets, and I forget which ones they are, Jackson and Geneva, that's one parcel. So those, the portions of the wash, they're parcelized by how they're surrounded by the streets. So one theory, I guess, would be that you count the portion of the wash between Geneva and Jackson that runs along Monterey and then also the portions that run along Geneva and Jackson, north, north-south. And that, that number was around 1,000. I forget, I don't have the exact number, but that's the portion that would be counted. Another theory would be just to count the portion of the wash that is on the street, on Monterey, but that has the same width as the property at 702 East Glen Oaks. Again, there's no, there's no authority for that and that's just a couple of things that we, we sort of talked out loud about. But again, we don't think that you would count that.
And let's go back and I'm going to tax your memory a little bit. In 1993, when we dealt with the Hillside Ordinance thing, there was a lot of those properties that they owned was adjacent to city-owned properties, which is governmental-owned. Did we count in those days, did we count our own governmental-owned properties and said that you don't have your 20 percent?
I don't recall.
Okay.
You have a fantastic memory of the fact that you remember that Dick Dusha voted no on that, which is something I did recall. I don't recall the calculation. I remember going up to planning and going through every single protest because there were quite a few, it was ROS and R1R zone change, so it was very significant, but I don't recall.
Okay, so under your interpretation...
We had, maybe the parks, properties included or not.
If somebody wants to do something with their property and it's right next to a park and it's this building and then a big chunk of it is the park, we cannot file a protest as a city?
Our opinion is that the charter was not, that provision of the charter was not designed to protect, to have government control private property interests.
Okay, so it's for private property, for zoning purposes and the zoning is for private property.
If you go back into the history of that charter provision, and there's not a lot of information on it, and I've done this, I did this back in 1993, and unfortunately, I don't have any notes, but my recollection was that that provision...
Well, you can't remember it because it was done in 1921 and 1949.
What I can't remember is exactly, I didn't take any, I had, may have had notes in 1993, that's when I performed the research. But that section goes back a long time and if you look at cases that deal with, out-of-state cases that address similar language, the intent of that language was to protect private property interests from government trying to change the laws that would affect private property interests as they were purchased. Understand that these sections, you don't find those types of sections in modern charters. These sections go back into the 20s and 30s, they're turn-of-the-century provisions.
What I want to know is just how much longer we're going to beat this dead horse. If you want somebody, want to put a motion up, we need to go one way or the other.
I'll beat it one more time.
Please, and that's it.
If we, if we accept the protest, let's say we accept it valid...
Then we get Mr. Najarian out of here.
And we get Mr. Najarian in and we decide that there is going to be a continuance. And if the applicant goes back and comes back and says, "Okay, there have been several rulings in, let's say, Nevada Supreme Court, the, I don't know, some other Supreme Court and so on and so forth and several rulings," that do count the washes. And then we come back and we found out after the fact that they don't have their 20 percent. What happens then? Are we able to just say, "Sorry, we made a mistake and it's out the door"?
Well, when you say you've made a mistake, if you don't have the hearing and you don't, if, I think you, I'm not sure how far you went with that multiple-step scenario, but if the continuance is, let me try to put it in different words perhaps, if the continuance were granted and they came back with authority and we looked at that authority, determined...
But we're accepting the 20 percent.
No, we can accept the 20 percent, but if, we can accept the 20 percent for now, but if you accept the 20 percent and grant a continuance, that doesn't mean you can't reconsider the 20 percent later because it has affected no one's rights.
Because it's motion verifying 20 percent.
Right, and that'll be your motion now, but if ultimately we determine it later, the problem is I'm not sure why you would verify the...
Can rescind that.
Yeah, you can rescind that later as long as you haven't taken further action such as holding the hearing. If you're looking at accepting that, then granting the hearing and, for example, we see Nevada Supreme Court case that said, "Wow, this would interpret our language and wow, it looks like the wash or other government properties included and we calculated it out and it's less than 20 percent." You can move to rescind that and then, of course, that has, that dynamics then plays to Mr. Najarian's ability to participate as well.
There's motion 9A2.
So moved.
Is there a second? Well, I'll pass the gavel to somebody and I second the motion.
What is the motion?
The motion verifying 20 percent.
Verifying at least 20 percent of the people. Sign. Very simple.
Well, you can't pass it to him. He made the motion.
Well, he's the mayor pro temp.
I'll second, I'll second the motion.
Oh, you second, okay. Retract mine. Okay. Further discussion, roll call on 9A2.
Council members, Menuchyan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yosefian?
Hi.
Mayor Weaver?
Hi. Okay, now, do we invite Mr. Najarian out and ask him what he wants to do?
Yeah, let's, let's put him on a hot seat.
You run into, you run into the difficult problem of this motion to continue because he cannot participate in that. Does, well, actually, you verified the protest. I'm sorry, you verified the protest so we can bring him back in.
We, we should note for people who don't have an agenda, 9A2 was a motion verifying the 20 percent protest.
Yes. Okay, welcome back, Mr. Najarian. Jeopardy is in play.
Cases like this is one of those cases that actually happens very rarely, but it's the most interesting cases there is.
And I do need to caution, I do need to caution the mayor and the council that the issue of the continuance should not be discussed with Mr. Najarian. His purpose would be to participate in the substantive matter so he can make his determination tell you whether he will participate or not.
Right, that's what I want to know.
But not discussion of the continuance.
Right.
Okay. So you want to know what we've done while you were doing it?
Do I have to go out again?
No.
No, 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 you can sit down. Don't go anywhere.
No jeopardy. Okay, would you like...
Like an explanation?
Tell him, attorney to attorney, tell him where he's at.
How about city attorney to council member?
That's okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, council member Najarian, the council has voted 402, accept the protest as valid. And as a result, under, I think what you already know is our opinion under the Political Reform Act, that then would require a 5/5 vote under Article 15, Section 2 of our charter. That would necessitate, under the legally required participation exception to the Public Records, or the Public, or the Political Reform Act, that you are then allowed to participate if you would make certain disclosures on the record that would then be contained in the minutes of the nature of the conflict. We would also have to make certain representations for the record as to, I've just done part of that now, but I would do it again formally, of why you, there is no other option but for you to participate in a hearing on this zone change. And then you can make, you can then make a determination whether you want to make those disclosures, you can make a determination whether you're going to participate, notwithstanding our opinion that, under the law and our opinion, you can participate under the legally required participation exception to the Political Reform Act.
Understood all that.
I'd like to make a comment.
Is it a can or a must?
Mr. Menuchyan.
I would also like you to state that the only bulletproof opinion that he has is a written opinion from the FPPC, as was stated earlier.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, council member Najarian, the opinion of my office, as reliable as it has been in the past and as reliable as it is now, cannot shield you from any potential liability or civil penalties from the Fair Political Practices Commission should it turn out that your participation is later determined to be incorrect. The only means of doing that is a request by you, and we'll draft it for you, for formal written advice from the FPPC based upon the specific facts that we provide them. In the event that we receive that written advice, which does take some time, the FPPC reliance on that advice would shield you from any potential civil liability or any potential civil penalties. And the reason I'm not mentioning criminal in there because criminal requires an element of knowingly or willfulness and that's not the case. When you have legal, when you have legal advice, it's pretty difficult to say that you've done something knowingly or willfully.
Councilman, Mr. Howard, Mr. Starbird, this is, this is a very serious matter and I do take this very seriously. I think the obligations of a councilman and my duties here are taken very seriously, but also, aside from my obligations to act and to participate in the deliberative process, are the basic principles of ethics and morality and conflict of interest. I am very concerned that by my participation, disclosed, with a disclosed conflict of interest, that I would not be acting ethically in this matter. Furthermore, not only would I not, possibly not be acting ethically, I may also be subjecting myself to some penalties from the Fair Political Practices Commission. Despite your recommendations of your office, which certainly I do hold in high esteem and high regard, I do not need to put myself out on that limb and I would request, in fact, I, you know, we alluded to this previously, that I would want something from the FPPC which would, which would clarify and indemnify me for any actions that I take in this matter should I ever decide to take an action in it. Because hovering above all the legalities, I think, are the ethical, ethical questions and moral questions of what is right and what is wrong as a councilman. I have a suggestion. I do not, I am not convinced by the interpretation that you have made of the charter and perhaps others on the dais of a 5/5 vote equating to a unanimous vote. I would encourage my colleagues to go ahead and vote on it and let the applicant, whether it's, it comes up 4, 4, 4 and 1 abstention, you know, let them seek a writ from the Superior Court across the street for an interpretation of that. I think perhaps that is their best course of conduct and a writ can be granted in due course and with all due speed. So, to get to the real issue at hand, I will not be voting, I will not be participating further in the consideration of this matter, at the very least until I receive an FPPC Get Out of Jail Free Card. And at that point, I, I still have issues. I have taken money from these folks, they have given me income. Any decision I make is, is going to be, it's going to be tainted, at least in my mind and perhaps in others observing this whole process. Even though it may be a legal participation, it carries with it those extra burdens. So I'm not sure where you are in this process at the moment, but I think I'll have to recuse myself.
Smear.
Okay, Mr. Yosefian.
Smear, from what I gather, just for point of clarification from Mr. Najarian.
He's not going to vote.
So, so the bottom line to you is, even if you had something from FPPC, what you, from what I understand is you're saying that you have a moral and ethical obligation not to vote on this or participate on this and all the FPPC can provide you is a legal opinion. It won't be moral or ethical.
What I'm saying is I would still reserve my right to recuse myself on this matter based on my ethical and moral grounds, even reserve my right, not, that's not my decision that I will not participate, but I need to cross that bridge if and when the FPPC determines to, to give me that and if and when this whole 4/5 versus unanimous, 5 out of 5, 4 out of 1 abstention issue is, is cleared up.
Okay, so apparently he doesn't want to make a decision at this point.
Yeah, and I don't want to go to midnight here again.
That's what he means.
We can beat this around. We're not going to have 5 votes here tonight and I don't know if we'll have 5 votes in, in 60 days or 90 days or whatever. So, is it a moot point to go any further?
The record should reflect that council member Najarian has left the dais.
Left the room again.
You still have the motion to continue in front of you. Another option would be to deny the continuance. As our opinion indicated under Koenig versus Bray Development Agency, the law does not require you to exercise a futile act. Our opinion is that you need 5 members of the council to vote on this. If, and, and I'm interpreting what council member Najarian is saying, is he would like a request from the FPPC and we can certainly work, we can certainly draft that request for formal advice, run it by him. He has also indicated, as I've just written in my notes, that he still reserves the right to recuse himself even with an FPPC opinion, but he will cross that bridge when he comes to it.
I heard all that.
That leaves me with the, the vagary of the fact that he may or may not participate, which if the FPPC indicates that he is, if the FPPC's opinion is consistent with our own, meaning that he has the legal right to participate and he decides to participate, then we would be moving forward with, potentially with a hearing because then you have the requisite number of voters.
So what are we doing here, Mr. Howard?
Well, you have the, you can move forward with the continuance and grant the continuance or deny it.
Or just end it here and now.
Well, if you, you end it here and now, it's, it's a little bit ambiguous only because council member Najarian has reserved his right to recuse himself later. He's recused himself now. If you deny the, if you deny it now, essentially by verifying the protest, you don't have 5/5 vote. You would, in our view, would be ending it now. And you would be giving the applicant the opportunity to seek their redress in court.
Mr. Quintero?
Well, it's clear in my mind that you need 5 votes to change this particular parcel. I mean, we went through it with the town center, it's been researched, like Mr. Yosefian says, with some of the top firms in the country, we need 5 votes to change the zone. So that's all I can say. Regardless of what we do tonight, we need 5 votes. I'm convinced of that.
But he doesn't know if he's going to do it or not, so what do we do? We sit here for a few months and get some rulings so we can move on here or what are we going to do here tonight?
I think those are your choices. You can continue the matter and legal can...
Definitely.
Well, let me finish. You can continue the matter, allow the city attorney, working with Mr. Najarian, to request the opinion of the FPPC. Whether in that time the applicant has the opportunity to submit more information relative to the protest or not is up to you and the applicant. That's one option, in which case you may be back here in 30, 45, 60 days once that opinion comes in and you may be no for the longer you are now if Mr. Najarian then decides still to recuse himself. Or, as the attorney indicates, you can proceed this evening with this matter, in which case you don't have 5 votes, in which case you'd be ending it here.
Well, I think Mr. Najarian, maybe he shouldn't have mentioned this because he wasn't supposed to deliberate, but he, it's one of those things in a court of law, when you say something and the judge says, "Strike that out, you didn't hear it, so I heard it." And one option is, we can vote 4-0 if we vote that way and let it go to court. And I think the court at that point will straighten this out. Then there will be arguments and Mr. Howard can put up an argument and they can put an argument and we will see, is, is this charter, this section, the way it's being done, is proper or not? And we'll have a judge make a decision. And once and for all, this will be dealt with. And if they don't like the judge, they will appeal it, it will go to, to courts of appeal and either courts of appeal will say that Mr. Howard is correct or it would say the applicant is correct. So either way, we will, once and for all, have a decision by the court whether or not the wording here unanimous means 5 votes or 1. And I'll tell you why. We're going to deal with this thing for all the neighborhoods that we're talking about districting, they'll be coming down with the 20 percent. districting, they'll be coming down with the twenty percent. Is the corner count, doesn't count, do I get a vote for this or not? We'll be, the cat is out of the bag, and we will be dealing with this thing on everything else under the sun from now on. So, might as well just kind of take a big gulp and say, all right, let us put it in front of the judge. I don't know.
I'm not going to go there. We violated the law last week, I'm not going to violate the law again this week.
Why did we violate the law last week?
Last week, we got a legal opinion of the city attorney that we could not move a lot line, and the vote was four to one against me on that, because I said it was illegal according to our city attorney.
It was a three to two.
Three to two, okay? And I hold the same thing here. We've had a legal opinion, need five-fifths votes. At this point in time, we're not going to get the five-fifths. Now, we either do the continuing of the hearing and let it work its way through the system, all these things going on at the same time, home permit, code enforcement, FPPC investigation, let them all just kind of move ahead. Some point in time, they'll all start to come together again, and we'll be back here probably, and we'll ask Mr. Najarian what he's going to do. I mean, is it fair to give the hearing? I haven't heard a lot of objection to continuing with it, to get more information, as long as the public is given due and adequate time to review whatever comes out of that investigation. Both sides have to know. You just can't put it together and give it to us on a Thursday or Friday and say it's on Tuesday. I mean, it comes back, the other side, which is predominant, very predominant against, no, you don't do this. They have to have plenty of adequate notice to bring their attorneys or whatever into the matter and argue the other side, in September, October, November, at the rate it's going.
So, are you saying that you're voting against it?
Against what?
Against the zone change?
No, we haven't even got to that.
September, October, whatever.
He's talking about continuing.
Saying for the five-fifths vote.
Or, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Just to do away with the FPPC things, as I suggested last time, we were dealing with this issue, we can continue it to the beginning of December, where Mr. Najarian does not have a conflict at that point, and he can participate, and we can have five council members participate in a hearing.
But I don't think that's fair, the public allowing.
I know, but it's a suggestion that I have to make. There's, that's another option as well.
I just don't think that's fair to allow a use that's not permitted to continue for another six months.
Let them apply for a home occupancy permit. Motion continuing the hearing for sixty days, that's going to be July, August, September. That's another two months, it's December. I mean, it's not that far off at this point.
On something, to a date certain or whatever, if you want to do that.
Well, did we know how many people want to have a hearing now, or how many people wanted to continue? Because I heard fifty-fifty almost.
No, there's hundreds of people out there that have simply replied, we don't want this zone change, period.
No, I'm talking about the continuance.
People came up and spoke on the continuance.
We've had a few here, but how many more do you think are watching at home? No. How many more people do you think are watching at home that if they knew this was going to come up, wouldn't be here? The last time we had this on was even bigger crowd. And I'm getting tired of the emails, nobody wants this, you know? And they would be here speaking on this continuance and speaking on the twenty percent if they had known all this was going to occur tonight. I know it for a fact. But people thought we were just going to come in here and look at the rezoning, period. And they've sent their emails, whatever. And so, and I, you, you want to continue it for sixty, ninety days, fine, somebody put a motion, and we'll see if it passes, and we'll, the other things will fall in place. We've already talked about the actions that will have to be taken by the applicant. Code enforcement will go out and check, home occupancy business will have to be applied for, the legal people will go to work, they'll complete, give it to the opposition. Somewhere down the line, we'll be back here again on this, with rulings from the FPPC, the home permit, code enforcement, protests, up the yin yang. I just would like to move it on, we've been talking two hours.
I'll move to continue to the beginning of December, if there's a second.
Is there a second on that? Motion dies. Is there another motion? There's no motion to continue the hearing. So therefore, we will have the hearing now. Why not?
Well, you, you do, you, you, you have confirmed the twenty percent. With confirmation of the twenty percent, if you're proceeding with the hearing, Mr. Howard, you, unless you're taking a position contrary to the city attorney's opinion, you lack five votes.
And I will not go contrary to the.
And the city's attorney, the city, let me explain the city attorney's opinion, so you understand exactly what it is.
You're going to weasel out of this.
It's, it, it's, it's that without, without the five voters, under our view of Article fifteen, Section two, having a hearing is an idle act. The law does not condone idle acts, you essentially, it's a preordained outcome. You cannot get five votes. And as a result, our opinion is that you can deny the matter without a hearing. You do have the option, if you want to go through the exercise of holding the hearing. And you can take testimony and hold the hearing and, and hold a vote. The vote may come out four oh, it may come out three one, I don't know, I'm not going to predict.
If it takes five, that's where I'm staying.
But if, but.
We haven't got five.
Our, our view is that case law uphold, case, the cases are fairly clear that the law does not sanction an idle act. It's an act of futility, it's a preordained conclusion, because you cannot get five votes.
Mr. Yusefian there, Mr. Manukian.
Okay, I'm going to try a motion that's not here.
Oh, gosh.
The motion that's not here is to basically, since there is no hearing, and there is no, okay.
Maybe this is where you want to go.
You have a motion for a hearing.
Okay. Here's my motion, that the city council finds that it cannot conduct a public hearing on nor give consideration to proposed general plan amendment and zone change number two thousand six dash three for the following reasons. One, the council has verified that the twenty percent of the owners of more than twenty percent of the adjacent frontage has been submitted in accordance with the Article fifteen, Section two of the city charter in opposition to the proposed general plan amendments and zone change. Two, in a case where twenty percent protest is submitted, the charter requires a unanimous vote of the council to adopt such zoning legislation. Three, an unanimous vote of the council means an affirmative vote of all five council members where there is no vacancy. Four, due to non-participation of the council member to avoid an appearance of conflict of interest, not all five council members will participate in the public hearing and consideration of that item. And, five, since the required number of votes to adopt the proposed rezoning cannot be reached, holding the public hearing and giving consideration to the proposed zoning will be an empty formality with the possibility of only one result, based on the foregoing the proposed general plan amendment and zone change number two zero six point zero three is denied.
Is that your motion?
And, and since there is no hearing on this, and I think that, based on some of the facts in here, I think that the property owner should be getting their application feedback based on the resolution that we have, and I've talked to the city attorney, and he can tell me what I need to do for that, or amend to that.
After this.
I can tell you now, or I can tell you afterwards, your choice. Mr. Mayor, members of council, should this motion pass, currently our municipal code has a process and a procedure for obtaining a refund of fees. It doesn't apply in this circumstance. This is a circumstance that, should this motion pass, is beyond the control of the applicant. I would be amenable, I should say amenable, I would be bringing you back if you so requested, an ordinance which would amend the fee refund provisions of the code to provide for the refund of a fee in this type of very narrow circumstance.
Similar to last week, which could have gone that way.
No, it's a little different. In this particular.
Yeah, but it's going to be a narrow, constrained.
Very narrow, constrained set of, set of circumstances, very narrow set of circumstances where a fee could be refunded in whole or in part, and of course, those will be your options, and, and that can be brought back within the next couple of weeks.
Okay, there's been a motion made, is there a second?
Well, I'm going to second it because there, this is, this lays out the reality of what we're faced with tonight. We need five votes to change the zoning, period. Whether we wait until the FPPC acts or doesn't act, to me, we're just prolonging it, so I'll second.
Okay, moving second. Mr. Manukian.
I will vote against it because I believe the applicant deserves a fair hearing. That's what they paid for, that's what they come to the council for. So, I will be opposing it.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Manukian.
No.
Najarian, Montero.
Yes.
Yusefian.
Aye.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming down tonight.
So, and, and, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this was an extremely complex matter, particularly mired in a lot of process and procedure.
How'd you know this was over?
And, and, and I'm not sure if members of the public actually know what happened, and perhaps, if you would like, I would give them a quick, very brief explanation.
I, I would encourage that.
Please do that.
Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, what the council has just done is, in effect, killed or denied the application for the general plan amendment and the zone change. It has been denied without a public hearing because they could not muster the five council members to vote on this. Based upon the twenty percent protest that has been filed, our opinion has been that they need five votes to pass this. Without having five council members participate, essentially, it results in an idle act, so the council has essentially voted down the zone change.
Okay. Good night.
The zone change has been denied.
No clapping, just good night.
And, Mr. Mayor, I'm assuming that the city attorney will come back to us with a very narrow ordinance that will deal with this type of refund.
I will have it back within two weeks.
For the refund.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, what's next, please?
And, and, Mr. Mayor, before we go there, since we have this, is there any way that, Mr. Howard, you can still get some kind of a response from the FPPC? Because I'm pretty sure this will not be the last of it.
I will.
I want to get that, just in case.
I will work with Councilmember Najarian. Our office will draft up the request, it will run it by him, because it relates to specific facts related to him, we'll run it by him, and, and as long as he still wants to follow through, that we'll submit it.
Although, the, I noticed the FPPC does publish opinions that are sometimes, offer a little more general in nature that describes a circumstance.
However, general opinions do not provide you with, we can't get a general, general advice doesn't provide you with, shield you from potential liability, but since this is over, certainly a general.
And my impression was a general opinion on this type of circumstance is what would be looked for, not necessarily an answer to Mr. Najarian's specific situation.
And in fact, the FPPC lets you know that they don't provide you with advice on incidents or actions that have already taken place.
Right, so it would be more general in nature.
So, we can, we can make it more general.
Which could arise in, in, for example, I think one of you mentioned a historic districting, where one of you may have a conflict.
And again, rather than debate it here, I can talk about it later, but there, there's some negatives to that, because what the FPPC does sometimes is tell you that, that, they just, they give you a general response, which is no different than what.
Let's move on with the next item.
Do you want the motion back? Okay, I need to give this to the city clerk.
Let's move on with the next item, please.
I have the original.
Oh, you do? That is the original.
The next item, please.
Artie, what are we moving to?
The next one on there, I guess it's seven.
Okay.
One at a time, because there's a speaker on every single one.
Back to adoption of ordinances, that's seven eight, Director of Administrative Services Regarding Salary and Benefit Ordinance, amended report at seven eight one, Urgency Ordinance of the City of Glendale Providing for Certain Officers, Subordinate Officers, Assistance Deputies, Clerks and Employees of the City of Glendale and for their compensation, GFA Offer seven five oh six by Councilmember Yusefian.
I have a speaker, one speaker, Barry Allen.
Mr. Mayor, before the speaker, and before you consider this item, I'd recommend that you take item seven, I'm sorry, eight B first. Eight B is actually the MO, the approval of the MOU, which forms the basis for the need to have the urgency ordinance.
Eight B one, right?
Yeah, it would, you have to read eight B into the record, but it would be eight B one and two.
Eight B one and two.
Because at, at least four, if not five of the items, I think six of the items actually flow from that MOU.
Okay.
I apologize for not mentioning that.
Then read eight. You said eight.
Eight B two.
Eight, eight B.
One and two.
Eight B is Director of Administrative Services Regarding Memorandum of Understanding, MOU Between the City of Glendale and Glendale Firefighters Association, GFA, and the City of Glendale and Glendale Management Association, GMA, on behalf of sworn fire managers. At AP one, resolution approving and adopting the MOU between the City of Glendale and the GFA commencing July one, two thousand and six through July thirty, two thousand and ten. And at AP two, resolution approving and adopting the MOU between the City of Glendale and GMA on behalf of sworn fire managers commencing July one, two thousand and six through June thirty, two ninety ten.
And, yeah. Do you have cards on that?
Yes, I do. I have about six, seven cards. Okay, do you want to say in a few brief words, Mr. Starbird, what this is, Mr. France, whoever, very briefly, since we know.
Yeah, Mr. France.
Bob France, Director of Administrative Services.
Very briefly, we know what we're doing, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. This, this action item would be approving four-year agreements that cover the fire employees. The, the first action would be the Firefighters Association that represents firefighters, paramedics, engineers, captains. The second resolution covers the sworn fire managers of the Glendale Management Association, which are battalion chiefs, and a couple other classifications, but actually, at this point, there are only battalion chiefs filling those positions. The, the agreements are four-year agreements. They, they average in terms of salary and benefit cost increases, in the case of the Firefighters Association, four and a quarter percent per year over four years, and in the case of the Battalion Chiefs, four point oh nine percent per year. Those each include, those numbers are contingent on the final year, where there could be a one percent increase or decrease from the, those numbers. The salary portion in the first three years is, is a four percent salary increase. That's a brief report. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to go into more detail.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yusefian.
I'm pretty sure that they're going to be asking you this, so I might as well ask you and save you the headache. Could you tell me what is on the salary and how much is for the benefits on both of those?
In the, 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 the final two pages of this report has the details on each year. It's a four percent salary increase for year one, two, and three. That's July one of oh six, July one oh seven, July one oh eight is a four percent salary increase.
And how much is that?
Dollars.
Yes, because the, the audience does not have the agenda in front of them, so they can.
And, let me just give you the total for the four-year total would increase salary and benefit total costs for the fire association, five million, thirty thousand dollars, two hundred and twelve. For the management association, the total increase in salary and benefit cost is two hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one for the, for the four-year total salary and benefits. The salary portion of that, I don't have that number exact, but I could get that for you without too much trouble.
How much of that is the benefit? Because I think it was asked last time, and you said that you were going to put that in the staff.
Right.
I should, I should note that the attachments he's referencing indicates for each year, the salary cost and the cost of every single benefit item in the contract is being amended, plus the average for each year, plus the total cumulative over the four years of the contract. The salary component of the, of the GMA component for the bat chiefs is roughly two hundred and thirteen thousand out of the total of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand cumulative over the four years of the contract. Just doing some quick math.
And on the, on the Fire Association, the number I'm coming up with on the salary is a total increased cost for salary of four million, five hundred and ninety-five thousand, forty-four dollars, out of the five million, thirty thousand. So, that leaves about four hundred and thirty-five thousand, which is the benefit cost increase.
Thank you.
Okay, want to hear it from the public now?
Yeah.
Okay, two minutes each for Speaker Barry Allen. Okay, two minutes each, we're Speaker Barry Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, staff, and of course, the public. I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard. The item B1, 8B1, just a couple of quick questions. We have heard the total overall cost. What I'd like to hear is the top level for firefighter, for engineer, for captain, as to what their base pay is compared to what their base pay was last year. In addition, I would like to know what the total cost to the city, to the taxpayers, to us, the public, is for that firefighter, engineer, and captain. Now, I ask this because there are people all over the world that are watching this on the internet, and of course, those at home in the charter area. And they don't have the full access to the entire report that was part of the agenda packet, and they are wondering exactly what these costs are. So what is the cost for the FTE, the full-time employee? And what is the base pay for those three categories under 8B1? Thank you, I'm Barry Allen from Vanguard.
Mr. Yusefian.
Mr. Allen, you had access to these documents, didn't you?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And if you had opened to page 12 and page 13, you would have seen both of these items. So you could have easily gotten up in here and talked about the fact that, you know, what the firefighter was getting and what it's going to get, just to, I mean, there's two distinct charts in here.
I understand that.
Available to you, and you could have come up in here, instead of asking us what it is, so we can answer you, you could just read down the line, saying, okay, they're getting, let's say firefighter was getting $5,452, it's gonna get $5,670.
I understand that, but, you know, the public wants to hear it from you, not from me.
Well, we have an elected form of city government, you know, and the people in this community elected us, and I don't think people on the other side of the earth are truly interested in what we're paying a fire individual in Glendale, California. They do, then please send us your emails.
Or do campaign contributions.
I don't want to go there.
From Japan.
My speaker, Herbert Milano.
Good evening, Mayor, we are members of the city council, my name is Herbert Milano. I decided to come to speak today, even though I have a very high regard for the efforts of our firefighters, I have respect for Chief Gray, and I'm very appreciative of all the efforts of our police department. But I believe that at the end of the day, we all must promote transparency. And this particular memorandum of understanding is part of your, or the results of your negotiations that you held in closed session. I did manage to take a look at the documents, I've read it through the internet, I was able to access it. And what my surprise is in reading this document is just that there are dozens and dozens of ways in which salaries can be bumped up. And even though it has been presented as a 4% increase, there are multiple ways that you can get a 13% increase here, 250 a month here, and I'm taking different ways that I think that the public should know as part of a transparency approach. And I think that it would have been very nice for the public to hear during the session and during this vote of approval, of all the different ways in which our firefighters and fire responders can obtain additional funds and benefits. I am concerned, because I also took a look today, and I received through the California Records Act, something that really troubles me, and that is that, at the end of the day, with all of these added benefits and ways to get additional benefits, that when it comes to the final retirement, we have nearly 60% of our retired firefighters and policemen retiring with a disability. And I'm very, very concerned about that, because at the end of the day, we must be fiscally prudent. And a complete review of how these particular increases take effect, and how it will impact our budget, I think we deserve for the public to know. Thank you very much.
Just amazes me to know we're the only city in the United States of America that sat a whack with the rest of the world.
Mr. Mayor, just very quickly, if I can, relative to the report that's on your agenda, this item, as you know from going through it during Meet and Confer, regardless of the employee group, and I think this is relative to private and public sector, contracts, especially union contracts today, are very complex. There are lots of different types of premium pay in addition to base pay that's provided, lots of different roles for employees and organizations that are addressed, especially in organizations as complex and large as this one. I think I can say without reservation that the types, the nature, the amounts in the various benefits, and especially in premium pays in Glendale, are very consistent with what you will find in communities with fire departments across the state of California.
Probably across the nation.
Yeah, you'll find very little unique in this community or in this contract.
You wanted to add something?
I do think another clarification is necessary. Yes, there are a number of other special pays over and above the base pay, but the increases that you are approving have a cost of four and a quarter percent average over the four years. That is what is being presented to you, is increasing salaries and benefits. All of those other pays, some of them are frozen and not being changed at all. Some of them, if they are being increased, they are a part of the four and a quarter percent cost.
And Mr. Franz, CPI year, this past year.
The April to April was 4.7, I believe it's over 5% at this point.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, let me make a comment about the disability rate. It seems to me, from all of the people that I've known that have been firefighters and cops, that spend 25, 28, 30 years sitting in patrol cars, carrying the kind of belts, the kind of equipment that they have to carry, the firefighters that do the kind of physical maneuvers that they have to do as a regular part of their, of their daily lives, yeah, I think they would have a higher disability percentage than the regular working people of this country. I mean, I'm not talking about paper pushers, I'm talking about rank-and-file cops, rank-and-file firefighters have severe physical stresses put on their bodies at the end of a 25 or 30-year career period. So it's not like they're sandbagging or doing anything else, it's just part of the rank-and-file that have tremendous pressures and lots of physical problems that they have to deal with at the end of a career.
And Mr. Mayor, on that huge, extreme variation in a disability designation, it can be something as simple as a hearing loss, which frankly, is quite common in the fire service, to something more debilitating, like an inability to walk or do strenuous work because of back injuries. Those can all be categorized as disabilities. So to the general public, they imply, you know, presumably, somebody who can't walk, who can't work. But in the safety arena, under workers' compensation laws and retirement laws, they're eligible for, and should be eligible for, the ability to have those extremes of medical conditions treated even past retirement. And that's what all gets bundled into this disability designation.
Well, even council members, after so many years here, we get disability from the neck up.
I was about to say jaw. Problems, problems with your jaw.
And, Mr. Mayor.
I got another speaker, too.
I'm trying to get that jaw disability.
Oh, you'll get it, no doubt about it. Just a matter of time.
It's a cinch.
And that's, and to the speaker, I think that's very important, my understanding of this whole process is, I understood the process to be done in such fashion that not everyone is going to get the same amount. And at the end of the day, what is the cost to the city and the taxpayers? And at the end of the day, the cost to the city and taxpayers was about average 4%, four and a quarter percent. And that's what the bottom line was. My understanding was there will be some that will get a little bit more, there'll be some that'll get a little bit less, based on where they are and how they go about. By the way, this recent statistics that was also mentioned in the television that I heard, is that number one and two killer of firefighters, accidents, heart attack.
Good. Not good, but bad. Can we have the last speaker now? Chris Davros.
So don't have a heart attack here?
I won't have a heart attack. Chris Davros, I'm president of the Glendale Firefighters Association, I just want to take a moment tonight to thank the Personnel Division and the city council for your continued support of the fire department and emergency services delivery in the city of Glendale. When we opened negotiations, I sent a letter to Mr. Starbird, and I told him that I wanted a package that would keep our employees here. Nothing more, nothing less, and that's what I believe you're going to do tonight. And you did that in an era of some tough economic challenges, and your employees recognize that, and they're greatly appreciated of it. I also want to take a moment just to make a comment about Chief Gray. You know, he is a tireless worker for the citizens of this city, and we're really lucky to have him. And I just wanted to make a public statement, letting him know that, that we really appreciate what he does, not only for us, but for the citizens of Glendale. He sets a really fine example for all firefighters and for all employees in this city. Finally, I want to let you know that the GFFA is here to be an active participant in decisions regarding the delivery of emergency services for the city. And my door is always open to any of you for discussions about that matter, and for your information at any time. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion on 8B1 only?
I'd put a card in.
On for 8B2. Are you speaking on GMA or fire?
8B.
8B1 is GFFA, 8B2 is GMA.
Move 8B1.
Am I correct?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers Menucha. Najarian.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Yusefian.
Aye.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. On 8B2, two speakers, two minutes each, we're Speaker Barry Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, staff, the public, I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard. And again, I'm going to ask the question, because there are people who have not had the advantage of reading the staff report and the MOU as contained in the agenda packet. And among other questions that I have, and really weren't answered, was what is the cost to the city for a battalion chief, including his benefits, his base pay, and we won't talk about all the other pays, that's one. And number two, my reading of the Department of Labor statutes indicates that there are exempt employees. Exempt employees, exempt from overtime, would be managers, people who manage other people, people who do administrative work, and people who supervise other people. And I do believe that the battalion chiefs fall into that category, and they should be exempt from overtime. And certainly, that issue has not been addressed, although I'm quite sure that at the bargaining table it was. Thank you, I'm Barry Allen for Vanguard.
Next speaker, Doug Nichols.
Well, Mr. Mayor, while Mr. Nichols is on his way up, from Mr. Allen's voice to the Ninth Circuit's ears, the issue of battalion chiefs as exempt employees, I wish was so easy under the Fair Labor Standards Act. In fact, many circuit courts of appeals have determined that battalion chiefs are, in fact, non-exempt, either under the administrative or the executive exceptions to the Fair Labor Standards Act. I wish it were so.
Now I'm ready, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Doug Nichols with GMA.
I was sleeping, yeah?
Almost. Councilmembers, Mr. Starbird's staff, yeah, we just, on behalf of GMA, we wanted to thank you for your support. As you know, we were assisted with the representation with our sworn fire managers, we do represent all the managers in the city, and we were proud to partnership with, even though I do happen to have a fire department uniform, I'm just a GMA representative here this evening. But again, we do appreciate your support, and I also asked Chief Harold Scoggins, who was a crucial part of our team this negotiations period, to also say a few words, we don't want to belabor the long evening. Thank you again for your support.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Harold Scoggins, excuse me, battalion chief. First of all, I'd like to thank you for your continued support of our organization, the fire department. Our members are committed to the community and to the citizens of Glendale in providing the best service possible. I'd like to thank Mr. Franz and his negotiating team. From the moment we started negotiations, it was nothing but a professional progress, progressing along in that process. So, excuse me, I'm losing my voice tonight, but, you know, I just wanted to offer thanks from the fire managers, we appreciate your support, and we'll be out there for the citizens of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. No more cards? Motion on it?
8B2. I'll second that, Mr. Mayor, but with one comment. Just so the people know, so they can't say that we're hiding things, on the fire captains or higher up, the original amount was at the highest step, and they have steps, they have six steps. At the lowest step was $87,564, it changed to $91,068. At the highest step went from $114,492 to $119,076. That's at the highest step.
Do you agree, Mr. Starbird? You're getting that look on your face.
Well, I think what Mr. Yusefian is reading from is the salary schedule within the MOU. What he's read is the salary level for the upcoming fiscal year '06, '07, and then the prospective salaries in the next fiscal year of '07, '08, for which there's a 4% difference.
Higher than.
If the intent was to compare existing with future, what you don't have in the MOU is the existing salary levels, but the first year provides a 4% above the existing, so the difference is roughly the same.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmembers Menucha.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Yusefian.
Aye.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. 8C, please.
Want to move back to 7?
No. 8C.
He's the mayor.
8C, Director of Public Works Regarding Experimental Signage Intended to Reduce Usage of Engine Brakes on I-210 West of Lowell Avenue. 8C1, Resolution Directing Staff to Submit an Application with the California Traffic Control Devices Committee for Experimental Signage.
I'll move 8C1. Second.
Okay, and there is one card. Mr. Dickerson, how long would you like to talk? One minute, two minutes, three? Are you opposing this or something? Did you get hit on the?
I got hit on the, my name is Mike Dickerson, I live on Montrose, La Cresseda. I stayed to this late hour because I wanted the council to know how appreciative the residents are for the great help that staff has been on this issue. They've been cooperative, they've been helpful, and in fact, they've been more than helpful. And while staff makes mistakes at times, in this particular case, I think they've gone above board to be helpful. That's the first issue. The second issue is, and I don't always get here, and as many of you now know, I'm leaving the city, so I will not be able to speak on this in the future, but you will be getting notice on the noise study that was done, and I'd like to make a couple points on the noise study that was done that might be helpful. And if I could ask council people that can pronounce it.
Give it to Bob. I mean, Councilman Yusefian.
Name of the individual, I just can't pronounce it.
That's easy.
See?
Yeah. Arreg Garabedian.
Mr. Garabedian.
He's a principal engineer from Parsons.
That's correct. He contacted us after the preliminary report was reported in the newspaper, and he asked us a simple question, how did we possibly create a study in which there was less noise recorded on an uphill and downhill mountain terrain than there was on the flat terrain in La Cañada? Because their noise study is much different than ours. It is much higher, and it is not logical that there should be a difference. And I wanted to cover the four differences, so when you ask questions later, what the problems are.
How many minutes is it gonna take?
It's not gonna take long. The first problem was that in this area, a lot of the houses do not have backyards. It was originally an R3, and they built the buildings there. And we were misinformed, unfortunately, as to where the equipment was to be placed. The first problem was that in this area, a lot of the houses do not have backyards. It was originally an R3, and they built the buildings there. And we were misinformed, unfortunately, as to where the equipment was to be placed. We were told it had to be in backyards. The codes, the California code says that it is a frequent outdoor human use area. Since most of those houses have front yards as their primary use area, we placed everything in backyards, which was, in fact, unfortunate. The second thing, as in the study from La Cañada, which is now available, you will find that the equipment placed close to the freeway, where it was elevated, recorded lower readings than the same direct line behind the freeway at a hundred yards because of the noise shadow that the freeway had, and we had too many of the machines in noise shadow. Thirdly, normally, a consultant will drive the neighborhood and determine where the noise pockets are. We, in fact, picked out places we thought they were, and that was unfortunate. The fourth item was that the equipment used was not state-of-the-art. On the La Cañada study, every member of council and interested parties could go into the internet and monitor every one of those machines all the time. Well, that's lovely. The real trick was that anytime a machine goes down, they instantly could send a technician out to fix the machine. We did not have equipment that was of that sophisticated nature, and we had some drops. So there are some real interesting questions about the noise study from Parsons, who thought that perhaps we had not gotten what we paid for. He made no judgment of that, but he did ask the question, how can you have less noise on a major grade, uphill and downhill, than we have in La Cañada? And he felt it was detrimental to the La Cañada study. I would also say that his organization was, he represented that they do most, if not all, of the official Caltrans noise study, and he was the person that did it. So he was the top expert in the city.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Dickerson, could we have that card back for just a minute so we can note the individual?
Yeah.
But, all in all, what Steve is going to recommend tonight, I believe, is an extremely clever way to make an immediate solving of a problem, so therefore, we support it, but it is not the answer to the problem, in our opinion. Also, as one small other, we have a substandard sound wall, which was not mentioned in the report, and it would have been a major item if Parsons had been doing it, because it's a substandard wall at a school location. And it is not, you can really go after, apparently, Caltrans for a substandard wall that's on the freeways. Now, I don't know, I'm not a-
Well, before you leave town, can you get some of this information?
I had reported it to planning.
Well, they've got it okay.
As soon as we came back. And understand, we did not call him, he called us. And I'm not an expert in this field, but if either Ms. Wilkinson or I'm sorry, would like me to call them, I will be pleased to call them.
It's up to them. You're giving some things I-
We have all the information, we can call them.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, one more speaker on this, Fred Greve.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, just, I think Mr. Greve deserves an introduction.
Well, he's from Laguna de Gallo, I know that one.
Mr. Greve is the consultant who conducted the noise study in this particular case, and also the noise study that's going to be part of the noise, review of the noise element when we get to that. But we were prepared to give you some background on his methodology and his findings, but as a result of some comments Mr. Dickerson made, I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of who this is, and he's going to answer, either answer questions or-
It's been a long night, I know you drove a long distance.
There's a motion and a second.
Yeah, this is totally up to you. I just wanted to make sure you were aware of who he was.
Let me suggest that we get the consultants' responses to the issues raised here, and we'll put them in a written form to you. At some point, that study needs to come to you, because that's the other piece of this request from the public that you haven't acted on as a result of that study. I know it's been distributed to you, but you've yet to bring it up in a public meeting and hear from the residents, other than Mr. Dickerson's comments. So, that needs to be brought together and wrapped up.
Mr. Yusefian.
Mr. Mayor, as much as I'd like to move this on since I made a second, I'd like to hear from the consultant, because there were certain, certain type of information was put out there. Short of having the consultant respond to some of them, we kind of leave things in a vacuum, and then people will be writing letters in the, saying that the study was false, it was not done properly, and-
I don't know we're going to resolve that.
So that's why I wanted to find out, I think he needs to answer, why was there a difference? I want to know, what was there a difference?
Okay, Mr. Menuchaian.
I would, point of order, I would like to agendaize that item, actually, and deal with the item of the application today.
That would be my suggestion.
Yeah. This is directing staff to submit an application, it's not an analysis.
Right.
So, we get put on another time, where you come up from Laguna de Gallo, and we get you on at an early hour. I didn't know you were going to be here from that far away. Is that fair enough?
And Mr. Greve has a full PowerPoint presentation for you, and he can go through all of the issues that have been raised and answer any questions you have.
Would you mind coming back?
No, not at all.
Put you at the end of the agenda.
It's your choice.
No, you'll be at the front of the agenda.
That'd be perfect.
You remember that, guys, when you make up the agenda on this item, you put him up at the front.
It will focus on the noise.
Of course, you want it done while you're not here, right?
I'd like to know, I'm an engineer, I'd like to know.
So we'll do it when he's back.
August. If you're ready. Okay. There's a motion and a second.
Councilmen, would you like roll call, Mr. Mayor? Council members Menuchaian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. D. 8D.
At 8D is Director of Public Works regarding special assessment rate for Brand Boulevard Maintenance District Number One, fiscal year '06, '07. At 8D1 is resolution determining the special assessment rate to be levied against the real property within the district.
Mr. Allen.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, while this is, notice is an action item, it is actually a public hearing, so you should open up a public hearing. We just have it located under action items.
Okay, it's public hearing, I hope you have public hearing, I have no cards. See, no one come forward to speak, the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to move the item with disclosure that actually, the city of Glendale spends a lot of money on that section. We spend about, city's contribution is about four hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars to maintain Brand Boulevard. And the assessment only brings back to us one hundred and two thousand dollars and seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. Based on the previous agreements that was made, and when the district was created, the assessment should be actually at a higher rate, it should be something like, I read it somewhere in here, should be what, twenty-nine dollars?
Nineteen forty-seven, Mr. Yusefian.
Nineteen forty-seven, but we're collecting ten twenty-five. And I'm going to do that because I think in the last year, the Brand merchants kind of went through a lot of trials and tribulations, and I think it would be, it would be kind of unconscionable for us to get more money out of them. So let them kind of stand on their legs.
Okay. And you're going to do more power cleaning on Brand now with that new concrete?
Yes.
We're absorbing the cost.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you can see that-
A motion at this point? Was there a second for the motion?
No.
I didn't ask for a motion yet.
But he made a motion.
Councilmember Yusefian didn't make a motion.
Okay, but I hadn't asked for it. Now, did you say-
The motion dies?
Please.
No.
We're power sweeping, or power cleaning the sidewalk more.
Second emotion.
And we'll apps, or I got the first and the second, I clearly understand that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and unfortunately, it's gone a little longer. If you recall, when we first froze this, my comments to you were, we were anticipating the construction on Brand, and two things, there's a major disruption. The second thing is, we weren't quite sure at the end of the day, with the major changes to the type of sidewalk materials and so forth, what the level of service was going to be. As it turns out, we're actually ending up cleaning more, and you can see the difference in the price from what we projected last year to what it was actual. And we will continue that, because we have a major investment in a nice-looking sidewalk, and we want to make sure we keep it that way.
You want the gum off and the tree droppings.
Correct. So more than likely, next year, we'll be back to, with what we call the Prop 218 process, where we come in and look at, coming back to that full 25% assessment as part of the program.
Thank you. It's been a motion and a second, and we have a roll call.
Council members Menuchaian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver.
Aye. 8D.
At 8E is Director of Parks, Recreation, and Community Services regarding Cerito School Park Construction Project located at 3690 San Fernando Road, Spec. Number 3173. At 8E1 is resolution rejecting all bids dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing the Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Department to negotiate directly with bidders in the amount not to exceed $2 million, inclusive of contingency for the project.
I'll move 8E1.
Mayor?
Mr. Yusefian?
I got some questions before I move this item. I'll second that motion, but let's discuss this issue. The bids that we have received start at 2.188 and goes all the way up to 2.80, which is a difference between 188,000 and 800,000 over the estimate of $2 million. So my question is, why do we have to reject the bids? Why can't we let the city manager go and deal with this? And also, I understand that they're going to do some modifications, so I'd like to have somebody from Parks let me know what their modification is going to be.
Mayor Weaver, members of council, George Baltaria with Parks and Recreation. We are looking at, we've done some value engineering on this project to reduce some of the items, such as we've reduced the size of our restroom, which we feel will give us some good value, still provide the services we need with a restroom, looking at reducing some of the elements of the park that are not obvious to, to the public, you know, say like fencing and other things like this.
Before you go there, you said you reduced the size of the restroom.
Correct.
What do you mean by that? Are the restrooms still handicap?
Yes, they are.
Adorable?
Right, correct.
Okay.
They are.
It's just what, you reduced the number of toilets?
One time, when we thought we would operate a larger maintenance element out of that facility, we actually provided a larger maintenance room, and would accommodate a cushman and elements like that, things, actually more equipment. Since that time of the bids, we were directed by our maintenance department to relook at that. They said, we're going to handle the maintenance a little differently. We're going to handle it more of a roving crew, as opposed to having staff there all the time. So it's not necessary to have all that extra square footage.
So that is reducing of the maintenance building, not the bathroom? You said you're reducing the bathroom?
Yes, and it's all one in the-
Oh, it's in the same complex?
Correct, it's all part of the same structure.
Okay.
It's modular structure, so.
Okay, so you're reducing the maintenance section of it, not, okay. And what's the other one?
We're looking at changing out some of the fencing that will be essentially come invisible between the youth center and the park. And that was all, pretty much, we tried to standardize all our fencing to a heavy galvanized type of fencing that actually was compatible with the school district fencing that's currently there at Cerito's Elementary School.
And what are we doing? So we're going to go from wrought iron to chain link fence?
In portions of it, where it's going to become part of the landscape buffer, where it's, the landscape's going to grow up.
We passed an ordinance in this town saying no landscape, no chain link fence. And I understand you're trying to shave money, but I think that's, in the end of the day, we have to, I have issues with reducing the look of the project after everybody has gone through, and we come in and slap in a galvanized chain link fence there. What's the difference? How much do we save?
The difference is that we are going to essentially still retain the galvanized fencing as it fronts Glendale Avenue and as it fronts San Fernando Road. And the only portion, it's like, it's going to become galvanized chain link fencing, is between the parking lot, landscape buffer, and the park.
And how much do you save?
I believe it's about, what are we looking at, about 10, 10? Forty-two? About $42,000.
$42,000.
Right. Going from the heavy galvanized fencing in an area will become essentially invisible. It'll be covered all by landscaping.
Okay, and what else?
Could you repeat that? Along Brand?
Along Brand and Glendale Avenue, where we have-
San Fernando.
Yes, San Fernando and Glendale Avenue, where the, actually, the fence you will see as an element of the park. We're trying to reduce the things that will become essentially invisible to-
That's what I'm saying. Describe where this galvanized fence is going to go again.
Yeah, from the school perimeter, all the way down to the fencing of the youth center along Glendale, and then from the corner where our monument sign is, where we have a little cutout, and where we attach our fencing to the other end of, near Brand and San Fernando, all that perimeter.
But George, the plantings won't be the full level when they're planted, so how long before that fence would be completely covered by the landscaping?
It'll be a couple of years. Yeah, it'll be a couple of years.
I mean, we're spending, to me, we're spending $2 million.
So you're a couple of few years, you're going to have chain link fence to look at.
Yeah, for me, at $42,000, I don't think that.
You know, we're spending $2 million, what is $42,000? And it's, and it's going to look much better, and I think climbing those chain link fence, you know? We're spending, yeah, $2 million, I mean, for God's sake, let's do this.
Authorize you $2,42,000.
Okay. You got your chain link fence, and you can go do the rest of it. No, no, you don't have your chain link fence, you have your wrought iron.
All right.
And what else is there modified?
Those are the main ones. We're looking at the playground, maybe resculping that a little bit. We're going to try to retain the water element that we have designed.
Okay.
Probably, we had talked about initially some tree grates, but we're going to try to retain those in there. Some of the concrete, we have some pilasters that we've designed in between the entry points of the park, and as well as in between, in between the entry points. And we're going to reduce about four of those, and that'll save us, you know, probably about another fifteen to twenty thousand dollars.
Are you still looking at all these things?
Yeah, we have to get-
Value engineering it?
Correct, yeah, we've got, we have a list, and what we want to do is then go over that with the contractors, see what, you know, we can get in return. One of the elements would be to give them more time also, because it was a very tight time for the construction schedule, and some of them had indicated that, you know, wish we could do better on the price, but this was, you know, time, your time period was so tight.
I think the time will buy you.
Correct, it will drop.
Time definitely will buy you, I think.
It will drop.
And, Mr. Mayor, that's what my issue is with this, and I understand that Parks and Rec does a fantastic job of trying to stretch our money as much as they can. As a matter of fact, I think they stretched the dollar like a rubber band. But this is one of those projects that the community has a lot of input. We had a lot of input. We talked about it a lot. It's at the gateway of the city. We are, this is where you come into the city. So to me-
What are you asking for?
I like them to do, but I do not want to go so far of value engineering to save 10,000 here, 20,000 there, and then we end up with a park that is not similar to what we approved.
Do you want it continued and brought back, showing the differences that have been made between what we approved and what they're going to do? I mean-
I think that's going to delay the project even more.
No, I don't want to do that.
I mean, how long are we going to talk about? You're still value engineering, you said.
We have-
Well, they want to reject the bid, this is the thing. If you reject the bid, then you have to go out to bid again? If you reject the bid, then you have to go out to bid again?
No, 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 no. They're proposing to do what you were suggesting, Mr. Yusefian, which is authorize us to negotiate with the low bidder, so we can make these reductions and not have to go out to bid again. But I think we get, we get the councils just at this point. If there's things like the maintenance shed, frankly, that park's small enough, we shouldn't have a cushman shed.
But is visible what...
It's fine. We understand that. Let us, let, we'll make sure we stay very close to Parks and Recreation on this and review any of the reductions that they propose, and only those things that literally won't have an impact on the scope and the quality of the project. And let us have authorization, then we'll come back to you with the results of that, and we may need an additional appropriation at that time.
I think that's what you're aiming for.
That sounds good.
So do you second it?
Already made a motion.
This is the attorney scowling.
Motioned and seconded.
One more, one more issue. There was an entry point between the youth center and the park that's still there?
Um, I believe it is, yes.
Like a small gate?
Correct.
So they don't have to jump the fence?
Last plan I saw there was, there's supposed to be a gate and opening.
We like, we don't like to do what some school districts do. They have a gate and everybody jumps over the gate and then destroys it.
It's in.
I don't want to do that.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council, just a question based on Mr. Starbird's comment. Is it the plan to bring back the formal contract for the city council to approve it? Mr. Starbird, right now the resolution provides for authorization for you to execute it.
No, they can just, as far as my motion is...
Well, the council's comfortable executing, I'm comfortable, but at this point, at this point, we're going, we're going to need more than $2 million.
Right.
So if the council's comfortable, I mean, I'm not sure, we, we don't know exactly where that number is right now.
Right now, we're at $2 million in the resolution. That's the cap.
$2,42,000, but maybe other components.
Right, and that's the point. When you bring in the difference that you need, at that point, you can just let us know what, what modifications you made, because you're going to ask for more money.
But is the entry park, entry park into Glendale, so, you know, it should...
We, we understand. We're not recommending you award the full contract amount, but obviously, we're not going to bring it back to the $2 million level either. But I, you know, I think we should try and save what we can. I think there's some components that we probably don't need, but I don't know what that number is. So I think it's going to have to come back to you again once we finalize that.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Council members, Menuchaan?
The motion says $2 million, just so it's clear that we're not limiting staff to $2 million.
It's not to exceed $2 million by this, with plus, including contingency. If it goes over that, staff's going to have to come back and seek more money.
Right. Okay. And when a resolution comes back to us for that...
Because I anticipate it'll come back.
But, but, project won't be delayed.
Yeah, the project won't be delayed.
I understand. Well, I wouldn't anticipate it. We'll get it back on the agenda pretty quickly.
Yes.
Council members, Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye.
At 8F is City Manager regarding League of California Cities Annual Conference Voting Delegate and Alternate. At F1 is Resolution Designating Voting Delegate and Voting Alternate for the 2006 League of California Cities Annual Conference and Business Meeting. At 8F2 is Motion Designating a Second Voting Alternate.
And what is the date of the conference?
September.
Who are we designating?
Mr. Mayor, it is September 6th to the 9th.
The 9th.
And the business meeting is on the 9th in the morning, which is a Saturday.
I move Mr. Weaver.
No.
I second that.
I got Dreamia Roses on the 10th.
I move Mr. Weaver again.
I second that.
No. I gotta be here the day's leading up to it.
The conference is in San Diego, the business...
I appreciate your faith.
There are three of you...
Have confidence in Mr. Weaver.
There are three of you, I think.
I can't...
There are three of you registered to attend. The delegate needs to be there on Saturday, which is the day of the business meeting, the last day of the conference.
Correct.
Which three of us are?
And I'm setting up that day. I can't.
Which three council members?
I was, and it was Councilman Menuchaan, Najarian, and Quintero.
I second that.
Now, we can, we can name more than one of you. We could have one of you and an alternate, but somebody has to pick up the voting card in the booth.
I'll move Mr. Najarian.
I'll second that.
Any other time I'd go. San Diego, that time?
Do we have an alternate?
Mr. Weaver?
I won't be around. I can't.
I know that.
Oh, that's...
I don't know. I, I don't know who's going. Did I say yes to that?
I don't think you are.
Am I registered?
When I asked last week, checked with Linda, she mentioned those three council members.
Well, I wasn't even registered, right?
Sorry, so which three?
Oh, you're just pulling my leg, guys.
Menuchaan, Najarian, and Quintero.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said Weaver.
You wanted me to go.
So yes, you are.
Okay.
You never wanted me to go. You're just pulling my leg.
Okay, so Mr. Menuchaan is going? Okay, so Mr. Najarian, make a motion, Mr. Najarian, to be the delegate and Mr. Menuchaan be the alternate.
Can I second that?
No, I'll second it. I can't.
I'll second it.
And just one last thing. By separate motion, the council could designate a third one in case the first two...
I move Mr. Quintero.
What do you, what do you expect to happen, you know, to these people?
We're not going to get shot down there.
We're just following league procedure.
One never knows what might happen in San Diego.
We're not sending him to Baghdad, for God's sake.
Second alternate.
No, but it is San Diego.
September's a long way.
So Mr. Najarian, me, and...
So who seconds it?
Mr. Yusefian, okay.
Well, they're separate motions. Let's get one at a time.
Okay, do it. Somebody moved then 8F1 and 2? They did?
So moved.
And you did, okay.
With those.
Roll call.
Did Councilmember Yusefian make the motion? Did you make?
Yeah, I made a motion. And you second it.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Menuchaan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye.
Now, I make a motion that Mr. Quintero be the third alternate.
That wasn't a motion.
That wasn't a motion?
Okay, whatever. All right, we're done.
He's going to be the fourth alternate.
Now, in going back to number seven, Mr. Howard, does he have, the city clerk have to read each and every one of these?
Sure, sure, he does.
Why don't he read all of them?
He can read all of them now, and then he can just start going.
And then can they all be moved in one motion or...
Yeah, with an ordinance, you shouldn't. That's the legislative act that should be handled separately.
Yeah, I only have two cards.
And I don't know, and you may have speakers on individual one.
I have two cards. Okay, let's do it. One by one, 7A1.
You can read them all, 7A1 through 7 to the record if you'd like.
He'll get tired of talking all that one time.
I don't think so.
7A1.
7A1, Director of Administrative Services Regarding Salary and Benefit Ordinances, amended report, and at 7A1 is Urgency Ordinance of the City of Glendale, providing for certain officers, subordinate officers, assistants, deputies, clerks, and employees of the city of Glendale and for their compensation, GFFA offered 7506 by Councilmember Yusefian.
Yusefian?
Move 7A1.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers, Menuchaan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. 7A2.
Urgency Ordinance of the City of Glendale Providing for Certain Officers, Subordinate Officers, Assistants, Deputies, Clerks, and Employees of the City of Glendale and for their compensation, GMA Offered 7506 by Councilmember Yusefian.
Move 7B, 7A2.
Sarah Speaker?
Yes, who want to second first?
I'll second it.
Okay, Doug Nichols, you want to speak on this?
Mr. Mayor, Doug Nichols with GMA. Councilmembers, I'll combine my comments for number two and number five, just again want to reiterate our thanks and support. It has been a long evening, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers, Menuchaan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. 7A3.
Urgency Ordinance of the City of Glendale Providing for Certain Officers, Subordinate Officers, Assistants, Deputies, Clerks, and Employees of the City of Glendale to supplement the salary ordinance of said city and amending the Glendale Municipal Code relating to compensation and fringe benefits under certain memorandum of understanding, GFFA offered on 7506 by Councilmember Najarian. Move 7A4.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers, Menuchaan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. 7A5.
Urgency Ordinance of the City of Glendale Providing for supplementary benefits and compensation of certain officers and employees of the city of Glendale to supplement salary ordinance of said city and amending the Glendale Municipal Code relating to compensation and fringe benefits under certain memorandum of understanding, GMA Offered 7506 by Councilmember Quintero.
Mr. Quintero?
What's that number again?
7A5.
7A5.
7A6. No, 5.
5, I'll move 7A5.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers, Menuchaan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. 7A6. Okay, read it in.
Urgency Ordinance of the City of Glendale Providing for supplementary benefits and compensation of certain officers and employees of the city of Glendale to supplement the salary ordinance of said city and amending the Glendale Municipal Code relating to compensation and fringe benefits under certain memorandum of understanding, GPOA Offered 7506 by Councilmember Menuchaan.
I'll wait till the public hearing.
Okay.
Public comment.
One speaker, Herb Milano, two minutes.
Mayor Weaver, members of the city council, my name is Herbert Milano. Today, our state budget is under significant constraint, primarily by the significant increases in salaries and benefits of public unions. The county is also in severe budget deficit because of it. We find our city that has to attend to additional sources of revenue in order to attend to the additional expenses having to do with increases in, in benefits and different ways in which the, our city employees can obtain additional compensation. And I would like to state a suggestion that if our only, or our main justification is the comparison between what our police officers or any other city groups and unions, if our only way of evaluating is by what somebody else gets paid in San Diego or in Sacramento, and we come in and top that, we are in effect increasing the salary for all of California because they internally will say, look to Glendale, they gave us more money. And I would like to really think that we sometimes need to stop and really take a look carefully at that 55% of our budget and how we're headed out there. Because what I see here is that oftentimes, our communities are having to do without continually. And I think that we, that we need transparency to really explain to the public how these expenses really turn out at the end of the day in salaries and benefits clearly, for us to take a whole month and really take a look, top to bottom, where that 55% of our general fund is going. Thank you very much.
Mr. Menuchaan?
I'll move 7A6.
Second.
Second. Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers, Menuchaan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. 7A7.
Urgency Ordinance of the City of Glendale Providing for supplementary benefits and salary and compensation of certain officers and employees of the city of Glendale to supplement the salary ordinance of said city and amending the Glendale Municipal Code relating to compensation and fringe benefits under certain memorandum of understanding, executives offered 7506 by Councilmember Najarian.
I'll move 7A7.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Menuchaan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. 7B.
7B is Director of Public Works Regarding Amendments to Chapter 15 Point 12 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 Relating to Grading, Fills, and Excavations and to...
Oh, Mr. Tom just dropped his pen.
And excavations and to Appendix Chapter 33 of the 2001 California Building Code as adopted in Volume 1 of the Glendale Building and Safety Code 2002. AP1 is Resolution Adopting, Legislifying, Supporting the Amendments and Changes to Appendix Chapter 33 of the 2001 California Building Code as contained in Volume 1 of the Glendale Building and Safety Code 2002.
Motion on 7B1.
I'd like to continue the matter to next week.
Huh?
Oh. That's a...
Is there a reason?
That's a motion. I think there's a number of issues that...
What?
Mr. Mayor?
Haven't we been over this?
I, I think, I think one of the items, I think we can fix that and change that.
As long as it doesn't take an hour.
No, it shouldn't take an hour. It's only one thing. It's on page three, and, and last...
Now, he wants to continue it, and you've got to...
How do you know what he wants to do?
It's on...
I'm, I'm willing to hear it now.
On the ordinance. And that, that was one thing. It's on the ordinance.
We need to, we need to read the ordinance into the record.
Okay, read the ordinance into the record.
Yeah, we should. Get them all in.
Well, there was a motion and a second.
No, there isn't.
Oh.
You're correct. Mr. Quintero, second of the motion for continuous, unless it wants to be withdrawn.
I'd like to know what's wrong now, because we've been over this.
It's a suggestion, though, inasmuch as there's a question raised at this point prior to the vote and the resolution, I suggest we read both ordinances into the, into the record, so you can deal with questions on the ordinance.
Two and three?
So you can be able to deal with the issues still continuing.
Week two and three into the record. Week two and three into the record.
At 7B2 is, um, excuse me, at 7B2 is ordinance amending Chapter 15.12 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 to repeal sections 15.12.020 through 15.12.040, 15.12.060, and 15.12.070 through 15.12.240, amending sections 15.12.010, 15.12.050, 15.12.063, and 15.12.067, amending and renumbering sections 15.12.250 through 15.12.290, and changing title of Chapter 15.12 to grading in hillside areas and excavation blasting, offered 7506 by Councilmember Essefian. At eight, at 7B3 is ordinance amending and adding various sections of Appendix Chapter 33 of the 2001 California Building Code, adopted as Volume 1 of the Glendale Building and Safety Code 2002 relating to grading fills, excavations, and permits, offered 7506, also by Councilmember Essefian.
I'd like to know that, I'd like to know what happened.
Okay, Swear.
Very tired, we've been at this since 9:00 this morning.
We've had about, how many hours of study sessions, Ron?
Swear, this is a very small item. It's one item, it's on page three. As we discussed these items earlier on, there was talk about the hillside design guidelines. On page two, it basically says, hillside design guidelines means the guidelines adopted by the resolution of the, the city council for the purpose of the implementing the city's hillside development. As we discussed this issue in the past, there was a section under 15.12.067, hillside design guidelines. We basically said to kind of eliminate this business of go to this department, go to that department and all this stuff, the hillside design guidelines should just go to the, the building and safety, and just have the, the engineering department kind of implemented in conjunction with all the, of the things.
So Essefian, if you could give us the page number and what you're looking at.
Okay, it's on page three.
We can follow you, maybe.
Page three.
72. 72, page three.
Okay, three, right here. And it says 15.12.67, hillside design guidelines. A, it says the director of planning shall be responsible for reviewing grading plans for compliance with the hillside design guidelines. This was supposed to change, and it basically was supposed to say the city engineer will do that, but the language was modified to say, to keep the same line still there, it says grading plans may also be reviewed by the city engineer or the building official for consistency with the city's hillside design guidelines. So my thing is, I think it should just say, the building official shall, uh, shall, uh, make sure, shall, right, shall be responsible for grading plans for compliance with the hillside design guidelines. This way, everything goes to his department, there is none of this, he said, she said, it went to this department, went to that department, everything goes there.
Okay, I'll withdraw my motion, if that's okay.
That's it.
Mr. Mayor, I'll just, just comment, we, in going through this, and the staff had talked about it, there was just a desire to have the ability to coordinate with planning on the aesthetic-based issues, and our engineering-based staff felt they were a little too technical-based, but we can go back to the way it originally was, we'll simply consult them on the aesthetics when we need to, but the process will be led by the, the building official slash city engineer, as we've kept consistent throughout.
They have any questions, they can at any time ask, but I think, I think it should just go to their department, so this way, they know what the guidelines are, because we passed the resolution.
Okay, so it'd be.
Or it's written. So you know what the guidelines are, you know what the grading ordinance is, so you guys will check to see if the hillside that is being modified, it's within the guidelines, and it is within the grading ordinance, all in one place, so people can't come to you and say, but the planning department told me I can do this.
Is that okay with you, Mr. Tom?
That's fine.
Thanks for staying to 10:00 to say that.
We'll strike the planning director and put in city engineer or building official.
That sounds good to me.
Time out.
You want to read that? Because we're adopting the ordinance, we cannot leave anything to staff, this has to be, it's a legislative act, so we need to have the language precise now. And what I'm hearing, for 15.12.067 is A should read the building official, you want it or city engineer?
To be consistent, would be the city engineer or building official.
The city engineer or building official, and we're striking director of planning, and then the rest of the wording.
Shall be. Shal.